Evening, everybody. My name is Libby Fay, Mayor of Buena Vista, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista. It's September 27, 2022. Time is 7:08. Paula, could we have a roll?
Mayor Fay. Trustee Cobb.
Here.
Trustee Hilton Hingo.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee DeCretzi.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Do you join me in the plenary allegiance? Trustees, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening's meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? If not, I would take a motion to approve the agenda. Some of them. Cobb, Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then you also have the consent agenda. Are there any comments or changes to the consent agenda? Do you have a motion to approve it?
Almost motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
One second.
Luke Crezzi, Hilton Hingo. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you, Paula. Anyone who would like to make a statement during public comment? If you're here in person, there was a sign up sheet at the at the front desk. And if you want to participate on Zoom, Lisa will be watching for you on Zoom. So we have one person signed up, Heather Ruppska. And Heather, would you please go to the podium and then give us your name and address? And make your comment to us, please.
My name is Heather Ruppska, and my address is County Road 100, County Route 350A. Or you can always find me at 111 East Main Street. What else did you want me? My comment?
Heather's the mother of the Chamber of Commerce.
I am the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. I think I have met all of you. If not, then we need to grab coffee and meet. And I just wanted to quickly just make sure each of you got an email from me with an invite on a new program service that the Chamber is going to be hosting once a month. It's Community Coffee. And I've invited three to leaders, actually, all of you included. It will be here in this room on it will be the first Wednesday of each month. This first one will be October 5th. And I really hope each one of you, I know nobody wants one more meeting to attend. But I did a lot of research before kicking this off with the different communities that chambers that do host this type of an event. And it's a great way to bridge the gap between different areas of leadership in our community and the community itself with our leaders. And so it will be open and free to the public. We will provide coffee. Hopefully, we can get some donations for some light pastries or something like that. Eight to nine AM. And I just really wanted to give you a heartfelt request to show up. And I'm sorry, it's one more meeting, trust me. But I do think as time goes on, it will be a great bonding event for our community as a whole. And it can do nothing but, you know, it's just so nice to put an actual human face to a name for something else that's going on. So, you know, from Sanger to Kristo to Heart of the Rack is Medicine to County Commissioners, Police, all of the above, and a lot of our very engaged business owners also. So thank you for the time and thank you for all that you do.
Heather, would you work with Paula, please, to get that announced as a public meeting? Anytime more than two of us are together, it must be a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, do you see anybody on Zoom?
Let's check real quick.
People on Zoom can raise their hand or they may have, they may be approaching us by telephone.
I'm not seeing anyone raising hands yet, so. I think we're.
Okay, good, thank you. Great. Okay, well, go to the staff reports now. Looks like Lisa's been very busy.
So I have just put together key dates. And what I thought I would do is just kind of show you in between meetings, you know, where I'm going, what sort of what the what my detail has been. There are some that I actually noticed today. There was one that I missed, which is the quarterly intergovernmental meeting. That that's going to be on the 29th. So a lot of these are project oriented, you know, just meeting with different projects that are up and coming that and then some that we've already done just for purview, like the Shining Mountain Montessori School visit. I'm really interested just to see how that turned out and understand. Now, I know we put a lot into that as far as the town and that facility. And so just getting to know them. And then I did go ahead and also put in here just kind of the shadowing, because that was something that you had, of course, asked me about, you know, kind of, what's your plan when you start the position? And I told you, you know, my my action plan was to do some shadowing with staff. So I kind of wanted to give you an overview of here's where I've been, here's where I'm going, what date I'm going. I'm just under half done. So I'm hoping by the next time we meet that I'll have pretty much met with everyone or be very close to that. But I gave you several takeaways. And a lot of this has been really great, because if you didn't do the shadowing and you didn't meet the staff, one, they wouldn't be able to meet you. And then, you know, there's there's that building that trust and approachability, which is very important, I think. But also just to know what they're working on and to understand, you know, that Public Works actually takes care of the parks, not recreation. You know, some some municipalities work differently than that. And so understanding how it works here as my baseline is really important to me. There's lots of great things that are happening. I know our clerks do some things that are very unique as far as the cemetery paperwork. And then also the short term rental tracking actually is done by them. And there's some things that need done in the cemetery with markers. There's also very interesting facts that I learned. And I'm sure you, if there were a few of you that went on the airport tour. But I found it very interesting that we have the fifth longest runway in the mountain communities. And so it's even longer than than Aspen's runway. And there's a lot of testing that's done there. And so these are all really great facts to just kind of know. And keep in mind, as you're looking at creating policies and things in the future, it's good to know all that, have that knowledge. And if you're new, you don't have that tribal knowledge. So just getting there quicker is very important to me. So I did put that in. And then the other thing is we had some really great events that happened. So that I know the PB did, you know, the 9/11 exercise where they did the they wore a whole bunch of attire and then did the climb, mimicked the climb of the emergency services there at 9/11 and kind of commemorate that moment in time, which is great. And that was open to public. And then we also had, which was wonderful, the pickleball dedication ceremony. And I think, you know, what I thought was wonderful about that. And it's really a theme across all of the departments. I cannot tell you how how amazing it is to come into an organization where staff is just highly capable of, they're all doing their jobs and they know what they need to do. They're doing more than that in some instances. And just learning about what they do and how knowledgeable they are is really been great. But, you know, of course, at the pickleball dedication ceremony, we've heard about Earl and how long he's been working on this. And one of the things that I thought was really wonderful is the story of, you know, they had approached, the woman had approached the Recreation Department several times about the pickleball courts. But it took that special person, Earl, to look at that and really understand that there was a need, do some research and and then kind of help mentor them along, which was which was great. So I have enjoyed getting to know everyone, and I'll continue to do that. There's many departments that I'm still needing to get to, but it's been really, really great. Do you have any questions for me on my report?
It seems like you're off to an energetic start.
Yes, yeah, it's been great.
It's really nice to have you.
Thank you. I appreciate being here.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Now we'll hear from the Town Treasurer.
Hey, everybody. All right, thanks, Lisa. My report's on page 24. A couple of things I want to point out to you. One, I'm going to do my best to follow up with this work session we had tonight with a budget work session next meeting. The department's heads will present their draft budget in a slide format, summary format, so that you can kind of see the priorities that staff's putting into the draft budget and some of the key changes year to year, some of the key capital projects that are being considered. And later on that same evening, we will also, in the regular meeting, we will present the formally present the draft budget. And at that point, we set the public hearings for the remainder of the process through through the first meeting in December. So little bit of process around budget next meeting, and we look forward to that discussion with you all. Moving on, we received our July sales tax, those tax revenue. And I've kind of restructured how this was presented in the report. I created two new tables here. So I'll just point them out in this report so you understand them. And then in future reports, you can just ask questions. I won't go through every number. But so as you're aware, we receive revenues and the sales tax is split up between our general fund and the street fund. So I wanted to start highlighting how much money is going into the street fund since that's part of our sales tax. So that first table in green is our general fund sales tax. And I've created two rows. One is a monthly look at how the actuals compared to budget and how they compare to the previous year for the month for that month. And then a year to date, where we're at year to date for those same comparisons. So you can see July came in a good bit over budget, 6.24% for the general fund and 10.71% over last year, 2021, July 2021. So that's that's a positive sign. I think that's that's no surprise, seeing how busy the month of July was around here. And then year to date, you'll see the numbers lag just a little bit. And that's because we started off the year a little slower, especially in first quarter. So the summer months always seem to help kind of bring us back up a bit. And then the second table is a is a look at the street fund. And this is something new. We never really looked all that closely at the street fund, but you can see there how those numbers came in. And then the next set of tables, again, is how we take just the town portion of the sales tax and divvy it up between what we call local, local businesses that those are businesses that have physical addresses, physical locations within town. And then remote, which would be the obvious things like Amazon, Walmart, those types of things, ordering online, but also something stores that might be out of the area as well. So big caveat, as usual, those those numbers are not precise, and they actually change from month to month. So if you are kind of locking in actuals and you say, okay, July for local was 408,000 and change right there, next month, that number is going to change just a little bit. And the reason why is sometimes people pay late. And and we still receive those monies and they get kind of divvied out to the previous month. So this is this is just to give you a feel of how things are trending between local business, local business and remote over time. The last thing I'll point out is we wrote another very large check. This this past between between meetings, we we had the third draw for our police station. And so we wrote a check for $474,000. So that's not normal for us. So always a moment of like, huh, look at that. All right, just sign it, let's go. So again, kudos to Joseph for helping lead that project. It's giving along amazingly, considering how tough construction is right now. And we're well on our way to spending down our construction loan towards that project. So with that, I will take any questions.
Does anyone have questions for the treasurer?
Yeah, I we kind of touched on this before when you just stepped into the role. But we have the expected budget and we see the actual budget in terms of revenue. But one of the questions was with inflation purchasing power, do we have any comparison of expected expenditures? And if it's higher than than we expected, or is it everything on track? Yes.
I, a quarter ago, when that, when you did bring that up, I was pretty nervous about inflation and where this trend was going. I would say that it's it's still a factor in these numbers, especially when you consider year on year change, inflation is a factor into that. But if you look at the local versus the remote and just all of the angles that we can see the data that we do get, it's still an increase in activity as well and not just an inflation number, in my opinion, especially as, you know, some of our top sales tax producers. They had, I mean, everything has inflation built in. So it's kind of hard to say that is not a factor. I think that's impossible to say. But it doesn't feel like this, once inflation settles, that we will plummet, because the activity is still up as well.
Yeah, and it's not eating into our budget at all in terms of like our expenditures are higher than expected because of.
Well, it is when you start to see 2023 proposed budget. We're increasing our expenditures in the next year's budget. But anytime we start to overspend our budget, we would be coming to you all for budget adjustments. We're not having to do that yet. So we're not seeing it eat away to the point of impacting our budget this year. But we are, we are starting to anticipate that a bit, a bit more going the next year. So things like fuel for our fleet, we're increasing those expenses in next year's budget. So it will eat away from our projected revenue increases next year. It kind of at the same pace, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I was going to want to check on that.
Yes, we were.
There's actually another big check in there, too, which is for Chaffey County Fire Protection. And so that pays for half of the year of services from them for $170,000. And Lisa, I'm hoping that there's a review process that we're going to go through with the fire, with Chaffey Fire, to just kind of check in with them and have a head to head.
And I think that he did mention when he was here last time that that's something they do plan on doing. I just need to call him and arrange for that.
Good.
So we'll do that. Maybe we'll do that in conjunction with the next meeting when we give our staff department reports.
Okay, if it fits in your schedule.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the treasurer? Okay. Joseph, I could hear from you. I guess we'll hear a little more later.
My report is on page 27. I will keep it extra brief just because I will be joining on later. So really, the only thing I wanted to just call your attention to was just a reminder about the Historic Preservation Commission. I was seeing an open work session next week on Thursday at 5:30. That'll be in this room. So the intent there is for them to do a bit of education on the architectural design guidelines as well as have discussion on the proposed design regulation. So would welcome any of you all or any members of the public. To be honest, I think beyond that, I'd let you all direct me if you have any questions based on my report. I did include an updated water dashboard. And while the available water number of 280, this is on page 29, didn't change, I think it's just interesting to look down through the various movements in that table there, you can kind of see that the way we're trying to track this. This last month, for example, we had a net zero impact on the available water, because we were taking some new SFEs from the set of sides of infill or from South Main Phase Two or from previously obligated water and moving those up to in use. So you can see those negative numbers in that year to date change column, but that positive top number, 47.1. So it's just an interesting balancing act every month to see, is it actually going to reduce that 280 number? Are we staying flat? What's happening there? So with that, I'll take any questions you all.
Question for you on the the negative number for the year to date change on the infill, is that because that many places were permitted?
That's because for the area of east of the tracks, we had that number of SFEs that have been entitled, so they have paid their water dedication fee. So this is everything from single family home builds to the new biking and CPS buildings that will come on Main Street. Those types of projects are in that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Planning Director? Okay. Then we will go to the Public Works Director, Sean Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, trustees. Well, I don't know if anybody looked at the water report before August. There's Joel, there's a little treat in there. But the good thing is, is it's probably just an anomaly. I doubt we're going to see it again next month. I'm joking, but but yeah, unaccounted for Ivy League. It's kind of been a long time coming to see a number that low. I am not really, I did the math like four times. But 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 and it was. And so sometimes it's some of the accounting that happens monthly, but we've never seen Ivy League come down that low as well as ours being down at 10%. So there's something happening somewhere up there in the system. So that's fantastic. You can kind of see a little bit of the, you know, my my fancy production description, you know, the the water production from 2020 to 2022. Kind of kind of reiterate the kind of the idea that we have had a couple pretty good wet summers the last couple of years. So I think that's a strong indicator. But one of the things that is is real is the the unaccounted water and the leak detection that staff, you know, worked really hard to to mitigate and and put strong efforts into it. So, yeah, well, we'll keep an eye on Ivy Leaks unaccounted in September. And hopefully, we have some something to look at. So. And just a bit of a schedule for the water treatment plant expansion project. So that's some some milestones that we've met and some some dates that are coming up that we're excited to see. A few, a few timelines. We have the DOLA Tier Two Grant Award in December. One thing I don't have on here is what you staff and our engineers and our consultants are reading on Friday with a couple of DOL reps that are coming into town, giving a tour of the water treatment plant. So that'll be fantastic. Hopefully, good trip. But we're likely to bring a couple of people in from JBA. I'd like to bring Al and Paul in. And I'd like to bring Stanic, our contractors, in as well to kind of show that we're shell ready and that we're ready to go with the project along with our staff. So it could be a pretty big group of people, but excited for that 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 meeting, that event. Source Water Protection, Elk Run Estates, meeting with them tomorrow to look at some of their kind of an early grading water protection district application that they submitted. So I'm going to meet with their team tomorrow and kind of look at that. They presented the draft application for review. So I think we'll probably have a couple of people there. County, as well as a couple of people are engineers to meet with me up there as well. Well, three improvements, pretty much the same story as last month. Streets, Main Street project, I guess, we're pretty, pretty brazen there. Got a lot down. It was, it was pretty good. We have a couple of things that it looks like we need to kind of fix, but it looked really nice. We'll be striping it tomorrow, so we'll have our double yellow duck tomorrow. And then we'll just, you know, just pass no, I guess, so we'll see how that goes. Parks, yeah, normal business. They're doing a pretty good job this year. Really appreciate their help. Want to spend a little bit of time in my staff report. I don't want to drag it down too much, but I wanted to to spend most of the rest of my time to talk about cemetery improvements and updates and kind of give you guys an idea. The last staff report gave you some imagery and some costs for for some fencing styles. This one here, we're kind of looking at some block markers and some of the block markers that we've looked at and some of the block markers that we've looked at prices. And I had a little bit of help, actually, a lot of help with Paula and William on this one. There's a kind of a joint effort process when it comes to certain certain components that that gets handled at Town Hall and then and then Public Works, you know, kind of obviously that's up to maintenance out there and also some of the, you know, site, the marking for for cemetery sites. But one of the things that, you know, we see is that it's kind of hard to beautify that that site there. So we have a dry land environment. We have soils that don't hold moisture. So that style of grass and that kind of textured turf environment is going to be pretty common for what we have. It's kind of why we started looking at some of the amenities where the stone block marker pillars might look pretty nice, additional tree planting, tree pruning. This is one area that we, I consider that this could be a high value way to to improve the site and also provide our community and our visitors to the cemetery with with better direction for for navigating that site. Wanted to maybe kind of bring Paula into the conversation and kind of start a little bit of the story of, you know, you know, what what the process is when when you know, when somebody has to come to Town Hall and, you know, talk to our staff about varying level and the challenges that, you know, that might be faced with, you know, some of the the lack of amenities, you know, in regards to mapping and signage. We did just put a nice new map out there, and I think that's going to be helpful. And I do think that the, you know, the the map has the ability to kind of talk to the block marker amenities that we're proposing to to install with the capital budget that was approved in 2022. So we have the funding available to do these, to do the signage out here. And we looked at several different sites to to, and it gives an idea of what 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 the cost that would be. But but anyways, I probably do better to kind of take a step back and, you know, kind of hand this up to Paula just for you to kind of talk about how the process works. So you're in.
Okay, so I want to walk you through what goes on when we have people come into the office.
Okay, so I want to walk you through what goes on when we have people come into the office. So imagine this, you've just had an unexpected loss of a loved one and you come into our Town Hall to purchase the site. So we go through, first of all, the map that shows you the available lots. So anything in yellow is available. So we walk through the process and the person, let's say they tell us they're interested in a site in Lot Fifty One. A site is five foot by ten foot and it can hold up to a casket plus up to eight cremains. Now, all of it cemetery does not require vaults or any of our burials and things. So they make a determination that they want something inside Fifty One, but they really want to go out to the cemetery first and look at it before they purchase the site. If they're an in-county resident, seven hundred and fifty dollars a site, and if you're out of county residence, it's two thousand five hundred dollars a site. So they'll go out and so what they've told me now is that they want something in Fifty One. So I give them a much bigger map of the cemetery so they can kind of have an idea where they're going. And, you know, we do it to, you know, identify rodeo road in the entrances. And so I give them, and I gave you guys block sheet Fifty One. So on our block sheet, if anything is in black ink or blue ink, that means it's purchased. Anything in red ink means that somebody has been to rest there. So I've given them Fifty One, but there are the block markers out there at the cemetery. So you do not know what Block Fifty One is, Block Thirty Three, Block Eighty Three. It's just a big open land with headstones. So not only do I give you block sheet Fifty One, I give you additional block sheets because I tell you, Mark, you need to go out there and you're going to compare headstones to this list to get an idea where Fifty One is and then identify which site you're on. So that's why this block markers, we have been talking about them. Well, I've been here for five years and I think Philip has heard me and Sean has heard me go on for multiple years. How beneficial they would be not only for residents and staff. Because not only do we use these to go out there and verify, you know, sites. But I use it when I send information to Public Works because they have to go out there and mark the site for when Jeff opens and closes the graves to ensure that we have the right grave marked and things. So if we have the markers out of the cemetery, it would benefit Sean's team, it would benefit Town Hall staff. And most of all, it would benefit the people who are purchasing the sites or going out there looking for a loved one. You know, we have a lot of people who has ancestors buried out there and they'll contact us and they'll know where they've been laid to rest. And there again, you tell them and you give them all this information. So, so that's, that's a day in the cemetery. I did give you a little overview of what I found in the Chaffey County History Book compiled by Suzy Kelly in June. One of the things with our cemetery, the town has not always had the cemetery. It's been, had several different owners, including the Catholic Church. So one of our tasks have been over the years is cleaning up the records. As you can see, when you look at these block sheets, we have all kinds of different handwritings on there. And unfortunately, some people have been laid to rest out there that we don't have information on. So that's one of our also ongoing projects. You have any questions?
Thanks, Paula.
You bet.
Yeah, so we have a few different of the styles of signs that we've looked at and priced out and a few different vendors that could help provide us. The signs from a few different cost values. The, kind of interesting, the rates that we're looking at. So you can kind of see that Holland Michigan's sign, that's how, it's kind of the sign that I'm landing on. One, the main, one of the main reasons is I think it brings a high level of aesthetic quality. I think it'd be, brings. Almost an infinite useful life because it's cast iron. I think that the, the worst, you know, the worst thing that could, it could probably happen is it gets driven over. But I think that could probably happen to, to any site that went up there along the roads. I hope you like it. We, Lilian was able to kind of show some of the cemeteries that, that that site was in. And one of them was actually Arlington. And, you know, it's, it's not the cheapest one, but it's not the most expensive one. But I do think it's the one that probably provides us the most aesthetic quality and, and best investment. So that's kind of the, the route I'd like to go on. I don't know that I'm looking for direction, I know you have, you know, approved the budget for this, for to do, for us to do this work and some of the other side amenities. So we've done some of the noxious weed spraying, some of the weed spraying and some of the revegetation. That's kind of an ongoing project that we'll be doing. This will be the first big investment that we're, will be doing with the sixty thousand that was approved for the twenty twenty two budget. So anyways, if you have any feedback, I'd love to hear it or if you have any thoughts. I know that this is a special place to a lot of people here and a lot of people in our community. And we did get some feedback from staff and we did get some feedback from beautification to kind of support this, this style. And I, I think it's fantastic, but staff will spend some time doing in kind work, probably putting in the posts. There's quite a few of them, but I think there'll be a time of the year that, that we'll be able to go ahead and provide that in kind resource as well, so. I didn't have a lot left on the report, kind of the same old, same old with, with the developments and the capital administrative projects that I've been working on. But if I skipped over anything, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I'd like to chime in just a minute on, on the clerks and Lilian's. It really, when I sat down and talked to them about the things that they do, this is, this is something. You have to remember these people when they come to them, their high emotions. And, you know, to lessen that burden with signage is so, so important. It's good to the staff but also the community. But the other thing that I really thought was really impressive was that they've really parsed through just literally this and doing an excellent job of putting together maps that are nice for the community to see. And I don't know if you saw the one slide, but it shows, they posted this earlier in the year, I'm sure you're familiar with that. But the clerks have done a lot of work to make that happen and I just want to say, you know, thank you to them because they've really put a lot of effort into it, so.
Thank you, Paula.
And also, you know, obviously Public Works has been helping, helping implement that as well. But I think it's easy to not see all the work that you put together with that. That's, that's, that's expensive stuff and they've really cleaned it up and needed a lot nicer.
And I think the cemetery in general has been improved a lot, hasn't it? Watering and cleaning up the bushes and weeds and everything. Thank you, I know that there are many citizens here who have to appreciate that.
I know I appreciate it.
I, I have one comment, Lizzie. No, please. Sean, also I heard a lot of people just express the basement that you managed to slurry seal as much as you did. They didn't call it slurry seal, they don't know that term, but to pave Main Street as quickly as you did. And I heard that at the town dinner, the community dinner, but just it really looks great. And Arizona does too, I rode my bike up there and I just think you've done a great job this summer.
Thank you.
There are a question for Sean.
Please.
Sean, I know a lot, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about that ground, groundwater survey or up above Elk Run in that area. Is that, what's the timeline on that project as far as getting that in place?
So, so yeah, there was a group email and I think it came out that, so Roy has some data from US, USDA. And we're waiting to see what that is. So part of that hydraulic report at Groundwork Study is complete. We're just waiting to get that information back. As far as identifying the, the approach, like we haven't put that project out to a cost yet to see what it'll be. So right now it's kind of in our engineers' hands and Al's and, and Rick could call this and, and our advisory board members are. Kind of helping kind of get an idea of how that approach is going to go. But I think that the, the really interesting thing is that, you know, we actually might already have that data. So we want to try to get that in our hands before we move forward with it. Because it sounded like there was already a hydraulic report, you know, done maybe like five, four or five years ago, so.
So moving forward, you know, as far as Elk Run, that'll really help as that goes forward to who's got out there correct or?
Correct, yeah, correct. You know, I think the Elk Run will be providing a pretty intimate perspective on that property that they're working on. I, 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 you know, I hate to. I'll just say that the Elk Run's engineering team is fantastic. They're very, very talented, their hydrologist is, is, is local and he's well regarded and renowned. And so I really feel like we're going to get a really high level report about that. I think that the hydraulic report, you know, and the upgrade report that we're, we're talking about, I think it's going to be a long project. I think we're going to be looking at several years worth of data collecting, at least a year. And hopefully that the, the USGA, you know, analysis or, or data report actually kind of gets us kind of into, you know, maybe a first, second year, two or three year kind of positioning for that so that we already have some background information and we can start looking at surrounding wells in, in that area right now, so.
Thank you.
Sean, how has this year been for bears?
I, I haven't got any pictures of bears.
I can answer, I can answer that one.
How's this year been?
Pretty good, it's my yard.
I think they're, I think they're here, but I, but I don't think, I don't think that we, we're seeing them very much in our parks. I, I, I don't, you know, I wish Kevin, and I talked with Kevin Medler maybe once, maybe two weeks. He, he has a pretty intimate perspective of it. So sometimes it's like the wet summer and there's lots of raspberries up there, so they're not coming down. Or sometimes they're in somebody else's trash cans and not Columbia Park's trash cans. So, but I can say that, you know, we haven't had any bear problems in town with our parks and with our trash facilities this year. I, I don't see them, I, I know they're around, I know they've come through all of our neighborhoods once a week. I know that and now they have some frequent places that they like to hit. You know, that some people that has had to talk to about armoring up their trash cans to keep them out and keep them, you know, out of harm's way. But I think, I think the moves that we made at Columbia Park, as unfortunate as it is, I mean, because I'm really proud of my trash cans. But I think it was a good move. So, so far so good. I don't think we're, we, we haven't seen the last of the bears, so they're still coming down.
But maybe the code enforcement provisions, they could have helped also to let people know.
I, I think so.
Their trash cans.
Yeah, and I can't.
And bird feeders.
Yeah, and I can't speak for, you know, he's pretty busy, we, you know, we cross paths maybe once or twice, of course, a week. But, but I know that he's, he seems pretty busy, but he's been doing a lot of different things. There was a moose in town today, I don't.
Really?
Yes, yes.
Got to see the moose?
I got, I got pictures.
Yes, with I today.
Where was the moose?
Rodeo.
Rodeo Row?
Yeah, or just in a field outside. It was one place, I'm sure.
Last year there was a moose on the leash at the caboose. Any other questions for Sean? Right, okay, here we go. We have the recreation. Are you with us, Shane?
I am, good evening, trustee and mayor. We, we've had just a little bit going on this past month in the rec department here. Most importantly, my, my favorite thing that we've accomplished is hiring Leslie Quilico as our special events coordinator. We had a very competitive hiring process, really tough, really tough decision with, you know, great local candidates. Surprisingly, all of our candidates actually lived here in Buena Vista. But we chose Leslie because of her experience working on the event organizer's side of camp of local events. You know, particularly BB Strong this past month, you know, she was actually the, the chair for that this year. So she was working both sides of that, that event. But Leslie has joined our team and, you know, she hasn't just hit the ground running, she's hit the ground with a full sprint and just taken, you know, a hold of the job and has been fantastic with it. We've had twelve events since she started and she started on September sixth. So we had just. We had a backlog of things from when I was trying to cover that position and do my current position. And there was a lot to do for those events. We were, you know, barely getting by and, you know, Leslie's came in and now we're ahead of the game and, you know, pretty much ready for. October and the rest of the year. She's really grasped all aspects of the position very quickly. And, you know, the remainder of the year, we're going to really start looking forward towards twenty twenty three and how to improve the process and ease and the fee waivers and everything like that. But she's been a, a great asset to the team so far and glad to have her on, on our, on our side. The other big project was the pickleball courts are open. Thank you to everyone who attended from, from town. Sue and Libby, Libby and other, other town administrative staff. It was great to, yeah, kind of mark a, check a, a big project off the list. The community and the pickleball players have been extremely appreciative of us being able to get that project completed. Although I'd say completed in, in quotation marks because, you know, it is open for community use this fall. We'll have some super, the BV Rec supervised Play will, and possibly some tournaments will start in twenty twenty three. But we still have a little bit to do out there as far as lighting, parking. We've had some issues with some drainage grates and, and just in general, kind of getting all the traditional court amenities and signage and trash cans and that kind of stuff out there. So a little bit more to do, but, you know, we have a great facility and it's open and it's already seen a ton of use. Earl's other big project recently has been working on a Oetic grant. He, that is a grant that was, I believe it was turned in today for Chaffey County River Park improvements. The, that is a partnership between the town of Buena Vista, City of Salida. Both working with Chaffey County Community Foundation to submit that grant to Oetic. So if we get funding for that grant, that will be, that will lead us to be able to complete upgrades, repairs and improvements to the rock and roll trail right next to the boat ramp, general boat ramp improvements. River Park restroom upgrades at the river park and potentially decking there. White Water Park in-stream features, including the pocket wave rebuild and Whipple Bridge decking replacement. All of that is kind of lumped into this one big grant from the BD side. And then Salida submitted a number of improvements for their river park as well. So hopefully that, that grant goes well and we'll have a bunch, bunch more projects to complete next year. Couple other things going on this fall is the McFellow Park stage construction. It's still moving along as scheduled, still looking to have that completed in October. And the work on the Whipple Trail, we put out an RFP and selected a preferred contractor. And he will begin working on that this fall. It is Taylor Boone with Elevation's Excavation, who's done a number of other trail projects for us in town. Including he is currently working on a reroute of the Walton Loop around some town lots that were sold on Belden Street. On the programming side of things, our fall sports are off and running. We're kind of mid-season on our adult volleyball leagues or, we have six women's teams and eight, or sorry. Eight women's teams and six men's teams with about seventy five adults playing volleyball this fall. And then we have around two hundred and twenty youth participants between youth soccer and youth football that we're helping do the administration for both youth flag football and youth tackle. And then, you know, you know, the second half of our fall will be filled with basketball. Youth basketball and adult basketball registrations are open. So, yeah, if anybody wants to shoot around a little bit this fall, registrations are open. Um, youth basketball and adult basketball registrations are open. So, um, yeah, if anybody wants to shoot around a little bit this fall, um, registrations are open. Um, yeah, that's all I have. Any other questions from my report?
Questions for Shane? Great job on the pickleball.
Yes.
Really nice.
I have a random question. Go ahead with the random question.
What's, what's the thunder thighs though? Expect, you know, like what type of a, is that a run or?
I, I believe that was supposed to be a run. Um, you know, it's, it's in the uh, it's in the rumored events. Um, I can't.
Right.
I can't remember who we heard was going to put that on. I wanted to say it was Joel Mayer, but I let Leslie talk to, and she said it wasn't her. So I, I think it was supposed to be some sort of run. Um, that and the Haller Run. Um, um, both kind of events that we heard were potentially going to be happening this fall, but we haven't seen any applications or anything like that.
Thank you.
There are questions.
Yes.
So, just to pull it up from the last rec board meeting on Shane, I know there's a lot of conversations about grant writing and things like that. I know there's a lot of those coming up. Um, like maybe this is a staff question. Does each department write their own grants or how is that sold out as far as the grant writing part of that?
So, I'm going to jump out on a limb, but correct me if I'm wrong. Um, that it, it really kind of depends on the department. I mean, I think with Recreation Department, we have Earl and he kind of has the special projects uh, for recreation covered. So I think he's kind of doing a lot of the grant writing. Um, and then others, you know, I would say it probably ends up falling, falling on myself as the town administrator to a certain degree. Um, I know Bill, he probably did some grant writing and, and then of course Joel with the water specialty there. Um, so.
Yeah, it, it, it depends on the grant and the department. So, um, a few examples, uh, Joseph and I uh, led the effort for the Dole Grant on the police station. Uh, and then several of us helped with that. So there was a coordination to pull input in. Um, Sean and I just did a Dole Grant for the water treatment plan and we, we used our consultants to do a good bit of the legwork to get it drafted and then we got it final edited and submitted. Um, yeah, Earl's done some, Shane's done some, so it, it, it kind of just depends on what area and sometimes we've outsourced it, um, especially on a huge project like that where we already have the consultants in place.
Right. So, it's not really worth having in house, just a person that does that. It's better just to spread it out amongst everybody's expertise, pretty much, is that?
Yeah, I, I've always struggled. I mean, it's a, it's been a, it's, it's been a challenge to, we have so much to do and, and a certain amount of budget that it's never made sense to just staff a grant writer.
Right.
Uh, because we need, you know, so in every department, you could use more.
Sure.
So, we've tried to have, hey, Earl, do special projects and write a grant. Um, that has some benefits, but it also has some drawbacks as well. Mainly that no one on staff is really a professional grant writer.
Right.
Um, but quite a bit of talent as well.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm, you know, what I'm getting at, you know, sometimes it sounds like, you know, we miss some opportunities. Because maybe if they would have been written a little differently or a little clearer or something, I just wondered if somebody who did that full time could be better and we would get more monies or is that?
I, I'm not, yeah, I agree on that. I, I'm not so sure, um. Yeah, it's hard, uh, and Shane, I know can speak to this. I know the ones that we've uh, we've, we've been rejected on in recent years are in kind of the rec parks, trails area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not so sure it was our writing that was the downside as much as it was the project itself and the competitiveness of that. When you look at the fact that we got a Dole Grant for a police station,
Mm-hmm.
Um, that emphasizes that, yeah, we do go get grants. We've been very successful on the water project as well. Those are easier to get funding for because they're the core things. When you start venturing into, let's build trails or pickleball courts, you, you're competing um, with quite a bit more. That said, staff capacity, and I know Lisa will be looking at this quite a bit, um, as she's evaluating across all the departments, staff capacity is an issue when it comes to taking advantage of those opportunities. So to your point of maybe we've missed out on a few things, things more capacity as opposed to the quality of the writing of the grant.
Do you have a way of um, tracking opportunities for any of this infrastructure money that may be coming from the federal government?
Well, I know, um, I get an awful lot of emails about grants uh, from various entities and I know Dola being one of the major ones. Um, and so, you know, uh, right now, especially with me just starting um, and kind of filling out the departments and understanding where we have enough help for that and where we need not. Um, that's something I'm definitely taking in and thinking about during these visits. Um, and then, and you know, ob- obviously, if you had someone that could go seek those things, um, that would be helpful too. But um, right now it's more of a reactive to those emails that I'm seeing and um, there are some sites that you can go to and if we know we have a need in a specific department or a specific area or for a specific project, then we can go seek, we can go look at various um, postings uh, that would make sense. Um, and, and do searches, uh, search the web for grants and the ones that meet us. I, I know there was one that came through not too long ago and I forwarded it on to staff and, and, and they're excellent to follow up. I got an email, you know, right away, I think it was Joseph. This, hey, yeah, this looks great, but it's not very much money. So, um, you know, I, I think that it depends on the size of the grant, whether we're going to put that staff time into it. Uh, but we're looking for those things. So, it'll definitely be something I'm, I'm watching and tracking, trying to understand.
Commissioner Baker um, sends out emails sometimes with different grants in them. I could, I could forward those to you and I get them from you.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
So, would CML have any sort of clearinghouse for that kind of information?
I think, the, yeah, CML usually does send out um, items that are of interest, grants are of interest. And another thing that I'm kind of toying with a little bit um, at the back of my brain is uh, we have a um, we have a, a cleanup here, a citywide cleanup that we do. And it's so funny because it's called uh, yeah, we're making Buena Vista Bueno.
Keep, keep.
You know, keeping Buena Vista Bueno.
He, Keeping Beauty Buena.
And, and it's amazing because when they told me that, I was, oh, you guys are a Keep America Beautiful affiliate. And, and they said, oh, no, we're not. And I'm like, well, we're, we're doing an annual cleanup. Uh, we have a beautification committee, but we're not taking advantage of an affiliation with a national organization, one that we have a state rep of, that we would have access to more grants. Um, and so those are things that I'm taking in as well. That might be something I've kind of plugged in a couple of times. Um, but I, I have uh, been a liaison to Keep America Beautiful boards before and I think it's, it's a worthy cause. We're already doing a good portion of that stuff. So anyways.
Maybe, maybe you could get a boilerplate grant application.
Right.
For us to edit or adapt, that would start.
Right.
Save a little step time.
Any other questions for the recreation director? Thank you.
I, I will, sorry, I will say just real quick to answer Mark's question from a recreation perspective. Um, yeah, yeah, and Philip, Philip was spot on with, with everything he said. Our, our last few grants, we've been just right there. You know, they award, um, you know, everybody that scores an 87 or higher and we had an 85.9 or something like that. So we've been very close and, and not necessarily down to the writing. Um, we did actually budget some monies for a uh, to contract a grant writer this year. Um, we didn't actually have any grants we needed to write. Um, so we, we are planning to ask for that in next year's budget as well. So a little, uh, we will have a little bit of contract labor funds for, for grant writing in, for recreation grants specifically um, in next year if, if approved.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready to move on to business items. Um, Paula, I think this next one is maybe you or Lillian?
It is me.
Okay, great.
And then, well, I'm going to tag team with Grant also.
Okay.
Also on the meeting.
Grant out there in Zoom land?
Yep, out there in Zoom.
Hey, hi Grant.
With us. Grant, can you? You're asked.
Allowed to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are, there you are.
Okay.
Okay.
So you and Paula are up.
I'll get it started and then Grant can finish up. So, in preparation for 2023 short-term rental license renewal process, Lillian, Grant and I took a look at the existing code, wanting to know, you know, is there things that we can change after doing the process for a year? And we did come up with three areas that um, we would like to see changes made. The first one was in the previous, before the new code was adopted, license holders were required to get a business license and a short-term rental license. That is no longer applicable, so we want to remove that from the code. But we do want to add that if a short-term license application is rejected, the fees are not returned. They're not refundable, that we go ahead and keep that since we've already gone through the process of reviewing the application and things. So that is one change. The second change is currently in order to get a short-term rental license, you have to have a fire inspection done by Chafee County Fire. At that time, the short-term rental needs to look exactly like it's going to be when you rent it out. So the methodology was that Chafee County Fire does a fire inspection. Immediately, somebody could come in and stay at that short-term rental. So what we saw was that people applied for their STR license. We held it pending the fire inspection. And some of those, we have held 10 months because either there was already a long-term renter in that unit or they were doing um, remodeling. So what we're proposing is that once the application is determined that it is eligible for a license and then it needs to have the fire inspection, that that fire inspection must be completed within 60 days. So that's uh, two things that Lillian and I have requested changes on. And then Grant has a advertisement enforcement issue.
Thank you Paula. Thank you mayor, thank you board. So what we noticed, um, as we went through last year and did all the changes, you know, it became more important to protect those that we have in the cap and make sure that that cap is protected. And what, one of the things we noticed is you can't just go point at an advertisement that we don't have a license for and call it a unlicensed short-term rental. Um, when you get into the court system, you have to have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt and unable to do that. Um, you just can't use reviews. Those uh, are hearsay in the court system. Um, and so they're inadmissible. So we explored the, going the warrant route. Um, and what we found is that what we're looking for most of the time does not meet the standards of the platform in order for them to release that information. Um, we were able to do an interview with some managers and some owners and get compliance that way this year. Um, which has been a good solution, but I was thinking and started talking with legal, what if we just made it illegal to list a short-term rental without a license? We simply just add that language to our code. Um, we explored this option with legal, making sure we weren't getting in the way of the First Amendment. In my report, you can see that we cited um, some Supreme Court um, case law in there. Um, so basically, we're coming to you tonight to ask, is this a good idea to add this simple language of making it illegal to list or advertise your short-term rental without a license in Buena Vista?
Any feelings about that, trustees?
I think that sounds perfectly reasonable. Like, you know, any way we can help out code enforcement to have some teeth to force the things that we have put into policy, I think are, sound great.
Great. Anybody disagree with that?
Nope.
Okay, Grant, you have our task approval.
That's all.
It's an ordinance change, so we need to do some vote.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so everything, so including what Paula was talking about is all in that one ordinance.
Right.
Correct.
One question, so.
Well, how long uh, between when an application is filed, is eligibility determined? It can be. Well, we're turning those around within 24 hours of things where we've seen any kind of delay. So like, we've seen a real rush on them this week because we have a cutoff now at the end of September because October is our renewal month to where we determine how many STRs will now have eligible for out-of-county people. So, they will stop taking applications for new STRs on the 30th of September. So we are getting applications. We got one, three in on Monday and Chief Bertram did the fire inspections today.
Oh, wow.
So we get the thing, the information to Chafee County Fire within 24, 48 hours. Where we see some delays is Chief Bertram orchestrating time with the property owner. You know, working his schedule with their schedule, but even as short-staffed as Chafee County Fire is right now, Chief Bertram is doing an amazing job getting those fire inspections done.
So it's a, it's a quick turnaround. Really, by the time they apply, they should have it completely ready.
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
Three of these proposals have been wrapped up into ordinance number 26. Um, if someone would like to make a motion to um, approve that or make changes in it.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 26.
Thank you. Swisher Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you, Grant.
Thanks, Grant.
Okay, um, let's move on then to the three-mile plan. And is this Joseph?
Yes.
All right, Joseph.
Thank you, mayor. Justies. Uh, you can find the staff report and subsequent proposed 2022 three-mile plan on, starting page 49. Um, I want to provide a brief overview and, and history of this, um, but you all um, not only read the packet, but many of you were involved in previous years' three-mile plans, so I won't spend too much time. Please do ask questions. If you have them about, um, what it is or why we're doing it. Um, essentially, the, the title three-mile plan, in my opinion, is a little bit of a, a misnomer. Um, but it is one of those plans that's required by state statute um, to define the areas within a three-mile buffer of our municipal boundaries. And so, Lisa, if we go to page 52 of the packet, um, you kind of get a sense for that three-mile buffer area. By state statute, uh, no means public can annex property uh, that would have the effect of extending your municipal boundary farther than three miles out in any given year. Um, and therefore, in order to annex property, you must have a plan, so to speak, that defines what that three-mile area is and what might um, constitute uh, infrastructure in that area and define those, those pre-existing conditions. Um, so we do have a three-mile plan and we've had one for many years. Um, state statute does require that it get updated every year. Um, and in addition to that, uh, an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, was negotiated with the county and finally signed in 2020 after what I understand to be many years of back and forth and kind of lying and, and want, um, so to speak. That IGA is in place now and it does reference our three-mile plan as is up here. And specifically, I'll, I'll highlight two ways in which it, it references that. Um, so Lisa, if we skip down to a couple of the maps on pages, let's see here, 71. The IGA references two distinct types of areas. Um, areas of desired growth, which is that map that you see before you. Um, and then we'll go in a moment to municipal services areas. So I'll refer to them as ADGs or MSAs. Again, I, I want to kind of come back to this idea that I started with, which is semantics are, are important and I don't want them to be misleading. Um, this is called an areas of desired growth map with segmented areas that are defined, planned. Um, this is not to say that town is actively pursuing annexation or growth in these areas. Um, this is to say that uh, these areas are uh, being defined and are an opportunity for us to think about as growth happens, what does that look like? Um, in years past, the three-mile plan has been a very factual description of each area and what is. and what is in that area, be it streets, be it waterways, things like that. For 2022, staff really wanted to start taking a little bit more of a proactive approach to what our three-mile plan could be. We all know, as Lisa mentioned earlier, our comp plan is several years old. Our comp plan also does not look outside of our borders, outside of our municipal boundaries. Its conceptual land maps, its other maps are municipal boundaries inward. And this plan, because it's required to be updated every year, gives us an opportunity to proactively say, what would we want to see should these areas develop? Should we have a say? Should the county and us coordinate more? What would we want to see in these areas? So that's really the attitude with which we approached updating the 2022 three-mile plan and the way that we would like to keep going, moving forward as we update this every year. Essentially, we proposed what I've been calling a vision statement for each area. This is, again, not to say that town is actively looking to take over anything or force development in any certain way. Instead of saying, based on the current conditions, we feel like this vision is appropriate for this area. And if town were to eventually grow to have this area within our municipal boundaries is what we'd like it to look like. So that's the intent behind those vision statements. Again, the purpose of this is to be a more nimble plan than a comp plan and one that's more focused outside of our boundaries and might help inform folks that might want to join town or annex into town about what we're looking for. So the 2022 three-mile plan, it has a few changes to the actual ADGs themselves, what areas there are actually highlighted or not. We redid the numbering to try to have some semblance of order. But by and large, if you looked at the 2021 map and the 2022 map next to each other, 95% of the area would be the same. So again, more than happy to dive into any area if you would like to, but I don't plan on going area by area. If you want to scroll to the next map, this map is the MSA map. So if you think of a funnel where the ADGs are a broad set of areas that extend far beyond the municipal boundaries, but all within that three-mile buffer, only a subset of those ADGs are municipal services or MSAs. So said in other terms, every MSA is within an ADG. But just because an area or a property falls within the ADG does not mean that it's in a municipal services area, if that makes sense. Municipal services areas are loosely defined in the IGA as areas that are either immediately serviceable or could be served by infrastructure municipal services in the near future. So that's sort of the basis for choosing which areas are defined as MSAs from a practical standpoint, which ones are close to infrastructure or could be close with relatively little investment. The other facet, though, that the IGA really focuses in on for MSAs, and Joel mentioned this a little bit when we talked at the water discussion on the Big Meadow, is that under the IGA with the county, for properties within an area of desired growth, an ADG, we are considered a referral agency. So somebody comes in, wants to do a subdivision in the ADG. If it's not in the MSA, we provide comment. We say X, Y, Z, county can take or leave those comments in their decision. If a property is within an MSA and they come in for a development review to the county, they are required to demonstrate a pre-annexation agreement with town or town's approval of their concepts. And so that the idea is that we have, we want to, and through this IGA, have much more control over how the areas right around us and close to our infrastructure develop. So if we continue with the example of the Big Meadow, it's a false question to ask, well, should they develop in the county or in the town? It's not a true either-or. It's, they might submit an application for a subdivision or development use to the county, but they must come and get a pre-annexation agreement with us if we want. We can say, no, we don't want one. Or we could say, actually, we require it, we're requiring you to annex. So there's a little bit of a spectrum there. But those MSAs are very important when you think about it from the standpoint of, if this property develops, do we want to have a say? If so, and if it's close to infrastructure, then we probably want to define it as an MSA. Again, if you were to look at 2021 map versus 2022 map for MSAs, there's very little change. We're not, we're not looking to just define everything as an MSA so we can have control. We are still asking the question, is it the structure? Could it be served in any realm of feasibility by infrastructure anytime soon? So those are still some of the guiding pieces. Another couple of elements that we added, and by we, I mean Doug, because he's our mapping guy, added to this map are the infrastructure elements. Just showing, in this case, our water pressure zones, which are just helpful to think about when you think about development, where our water infrastructure capable of reach to. You can see we have relatively updated within the last few years of our water mains and sewer lines represented on the map, as well as obviously streets and railroads and other riverways. So with all that, to summarize, the three-mile plan this year has had a more extensive and in-depth process than it has in years past, primarily because we are trying to take a little bit more of a proactive approach. So the Planning and Zoning Commission met to discuss this plan and the sort of very high-level drafts of those vision statements back in June, provided direction to us. We got input from the Transportation Advisory Board of the county. And then went back to planning and zoning last month, or maybe it was earlier this month. I'm losing track of time. So we bring it back before you tonight. If you are at a place where you're ready to adopt it as our 2022 three-mile plan, we do have a resolution in your packet that you can, you can adopt. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I was doing my best to read the 2021 plan and then the 22, just to see where all the differences were. And I clearly misread a couple of these maps and where they overlaid. But one question I did have, and I realized that the overlay is probably wrong, but still ask is that, I think it's area two here on the 2022 map?
If you go back up at least one page, we'll see if the areas of that are growth. So area two is both in the northeast and the west?
Yeah, I just didn't, the reason I was asking, because in the 2021 map, you know, we have this area, it's area seven, I believe, where it was talking about potential growth and said that there is thought of residential there, but that the water pressure would be too much, I think, to actually develop it. And I guess that that was my way, my question is, I didn't see that in the 2022, 2022 plan kind of addressed. But I think it's, because it's more in the two second, area two section, not area three. It just seems like those kind of merged a little bit between the two minutes. Is that right?
Yeah, so with area, what was area seven specifically? We did choose to break that up into two different areas, primarily taking a view of, as we thought about, vision statements for each area, an area as large as area seven from 2021, which had everything from places that were surrounded on three sides by town and already served and hooked up to water sewer, all the way out to beyond County 361, above our water tanks, that far out. It was very hard to think about any sort of meaningful vision statement. Sure. So we felt like breaking it up into sort of near-town or more adjacent to-town area, which is area three now, and area two, which is further out, might more honor the distinct ways in which that will probably develop and in which that might more likely come into town if it were that way. So to, more specifically to your point, that water pressure zone issue is not necessarily an issue in zone or in area two because it's almost fully without, with outside of hard water pressure area, whereas area three does have most of it within, but some without that pressure zone.
Okay, so area three has a little bit of the issue that was addressed in 2021, but not the majority of it.
Yeah. An area two is just so fully outside that I don't think it's named in the structure.
Okay.
Joseph, just a couple of questions, and your first answer will probably ask my second question, answer my second question. So is there a state rule where that circle originates, that three-mile, where it goes out? Does it say specifically where that starts?
It's supposed to be with three miles from your current boundaries. And so you see that buffer, so Lisa, if you go two, two more pages up, it's sort of a circle, but not really. It's a, it's a very loose representation. If you just went, let's say, in the south end of the rodeo grounds, three miles south, that forms that part of the buffer. So you do that and you get that shape. Obviously, part of our town is missing essentially in the middle. So it isn't the perfect tool, but it does create a semblance of three miles away from the outer edges of our borders.
Guess what I'm asking, a big chunks of BLM, you know, I noticed. And I don't know if there's any thought about fudging that line a bit toward back to the west so we would have more say-so in our northern, southern and western boundaries instead of to the east where there's so much BLM, we probably don't really have much say on that public land anyways.
Yeah, so Lisa, if you go down one page, it shows ownership. That's a great question, one that I don't know the answer to from a statutory perspective. I'm not sure we have the leeway to apply discretion to our three-mile buffer. But you're absolutely right that most of that green and yellow land is not necessarily ours to vision. And you'll notice that actually, none of that is an area of desired growth.
Right.
So it is a good point.
I can answer that question if you'd like.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, how's everybody? Carefully, yeah, yeah, so you basically can't, I think the term was fudge it to get more on one side than the other. The way you would extend your three-mile boundary is to annex property, and then you'd have more, you could go further out based on a property you annexed to get three miles next year. But you can't take one mile on one side and add those two miles to the other. It's basically three miles from any exterior boundary of the town.
Thank you.
Question, yes, Gina.
Okay, so with like the 2021 plan, like the area seven and then splitting two and three. So it used to be county residential, and I did my, my darndest to try to find an actual definition of like what that was, and I could not find it anywhere. And the only reason why I ask is because I know two is staying what looks like to be low density, but three is now being changed to medium density. And I guess I'm just curious how you come from that county residential, which I would assume is more low density than I am assuming, which is known as a good thing to do, but lack of finding a definition for that. Why moving that to medium? And actually, what is the net, like, what is the town's definition of medium density?
Great question. So I'll provide a little bit of context to maybe get at your first question around county residential. So first of all, this plan is not seeking to set any density requirements or zoning or conditions. It's saying that based on current existing conditions and proximity to infrastructure, we envision this type of density may be appropriate. So that's a, that's a more apt way to describe it. That being said, this three-mile plan, specifically this year, has a unique opportunity because the county is currently undergoing their land use code update. And I've been working with county staff to line up the three-mile plan to be a key consideration as they create their new subdivision processes and definitions and zoning for the areas around Buena Vista. And specifically thinking about that question, well, does it make sense that one zone district in the county right next to town versus 10 miles away from town? Maybe it doesn't. And so I would like, and the county would also like to have more coordination between what town would like to see on its borders and what county zoning says or promotes. So all that to say, medium density in our code, the closest definition we would have is our R2 zone district, which we don't definitely define enough units per acre. Joel and I were going back to this the other day.
It's my next question.
County, county definition of density in that zone district that's in area two, three is between four and 16 units an acre, pretty large spread. So that's anywhere from a quarter acre lot to much smaller than that.
And that's county, you said, that's county's median density?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Now, I was doing some rounds, like, I think these are like estimates, I guess. So like the farms, that's like high density, right? Like, that's our H, or I'm sorry, our three here. And I don't, I believe it's like 24 acres, I think. I know you guys know better than me on that exact. But I think the total housing units they have there about, once it's built up, should be about 218, I think, supposedly, according to their website at least, unless it's all changed. But that would mean a high-density housing is about nine units per acre, assuming it's around that 24 acre. And so I guess, I mean, going through all this, and I understand that this has a lot to do with the idea of annexation of this area. You know, if, if there are things that pop up that have like 16 things in it's per acre, right? And that's medium density, but if it wants to be annexed into what our definition, which seems to be potentially a lot less, how does that, like, how does that work? Because then we're kind of like, which definition wins or what rule do we go by? So it's confusing, if that makes sense. So you guys follow that kind of? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody?
I'll lend a little something here. I have seen there be in the zoning ordinance itself, I've seen tables, well, where you'll actually take and do a table of what they have and what you have, or what you would slated if it were pulled in. And so I don't, so that's so that it's set in stone, sort of like, if, if county has this zoning and it were to be pulled in, this is what would, we would mirror as the most relevant for that area. So they're kind of doing it a little differently with the map because the map kind of gives you that guidance. But there's a coordination process, correct, Justin?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have anything, to my knowledge, that, that tries to say, XYZ county zone district equates to XYZ town zone district. I mean, if you recall during the Stackhouse annexation process, any annexation, there's a negotiation and a community conversation about what appropriate zoning is that applicant will ask for. And this whole planning and zoning commission will be able to make the determination what it feels appropriate, based on data inputs, community conversations, comp plan of town, and something like this plan. So I would say that this plan would not seek to, to create the definition that we have to live by. It's more of it, another source of data, the way that I would see it in those community conversations. And should be updated and changed as years pass, based on how it's going to evolve.
That's all, folks. Yeah, I didn't, you know, I know we have all these different documents, and some are hard lines, some are guidelines and such and so with this, you know, because I know the focus of it is potentially annexations and pre-annex, you know, that whole. So knowing that it's not an actual hard line, this is what it says, has to go, I guess, isn't it?
And however, the inverse is true, too. Picture, you know, area three or two, and somebody comes in and proposes to annex in and do a big commercial park of, of office buildings, right? Not sure somebody would do that. But that would be very incongruent with the vision statement we have in the three-mile plan, with our comp plan, with the surrounding uses. So I think that it's also a cue to those that are seeking to annex or seeking to develop. What, what property do they want to look at for what they're looking to do? And hopefully steering them more towards areas where we want their type of. And hopefully steering them more towards areas where we want their type of development.
Two quick other tiny though, um. There's one, I was wondering if it should be printed all those papers out and try to have myself organized. Okay, for area nine. Can you explain a little bit about what it means by the enclave? If that was swapped, it says essentially, well, the quite, the sentence is acquisition of area nine would also provide a benefit. Town of Beavista by turning area two into an enclave. And so, but looking at where nine was on the map and where two is, I was like, I don't get it because they're far apart. And so I just don't understand. Kind of how that works.
You don't understand about enclaves?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And if we surround the property, then we can annex it.
Yeah, so two quick things, one for the, for Lisa, if you want to go to page sixty five in the packet. That's the description of area nine and you caught a typo, so thank you.
That's what I, that's what it's like is the house.
Turning area ten.
That's what I thought, okay. We can do an amendment to the thing.
So an enclave is, is the only situation that I'm aware of and Jeff, I'm sure will correct me. In which a town can force annexation without the proper.
Okay, and that's, I assumed that there might have been something funky, but because, you know, I wasn't sure, that's always like, I should ask this anyway, but. It, it makes total sense in terms of, I think, where I was originally thinking, so.
Thank you for catching on.
Sure. And I think I did have one more thing and now I forget where it was in my packet, but I think it was maybe the, one of the first. Zones and I was kind of thinking, oh, in area eight. I think we just talk about it as like, where there was just either commercial, I'm sorry, residential. And I was wondering if it was also supposed to be like commercial down at the bottom and this, I don't know. That was important, so I like fine tooth combed this.
Area eight is our airport, so.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I think I meant area one, that's my fault. At the bottom for land use. Commercial is desired, but then at the top.
Page fifty seven.
Oh, sorry. So at the top, we say commercial gateway, blah, 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 blah. But then it talks about large multi-family housing development, things like that. But down here it's land uses, we just kind of cover, it's saying commercial uses are desired. But I was like, oh, maybe that should also say residential, but again, this is just me being like, I don't know if it matters, maybe it doesn't, but.
No, I think it's a, it's a great catch, you know, I think. From a, from meeting and, and land use perspective, a large multi-family building would be considered a commercial building.
Okay.
But it's absolutely right that in the vision statement, it talks about small, large, multi-family, it doesn't say. So we could easily add that.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't know if that really makes a big difference or not, because it's, you know, not everything here is hard line, but. I just took the time to read through everything, so. Um, cool, I will be quiet now, thanks for fielding all that.
Thank you.
I, I kind of, I want to see if we could kind of visualize our previous water conversation with this map in front of us in terms of. Like, let's say something, somebody in three is currently a municipal service area, but they'd be. Currently they'd have to get approval to build them with the county, right? To get approved to be, but they'd have to get pre-annexed for, at least it's zone three, or area three, sorry. I'm just kind of trying to figure out, you know, what their current like water situation would be is if they're building in the county. Then if they annex, what happens to the water rights ahead previously and how does that get absorbed? And that's just kind of, just to kind of better understand our previous conversation with this map and desired growth area.
That's, that's exactly the reason for the requirement for pre- annexation. So, so if someone wants to build a single family home, the MSA doesn't apply, right? They can go to the county, get a building permit, drill a well, move forward without our knowledge. Um, this is for development applications, so somebody comes in and tries to change zoning in the county, tries to do a subdivision in the county. They will not be issued a final approval and in many cases, the county won't even accept their application. Until we have an executed pre- annexation agreement, we would detail. If you're going to subdivide, you must meet these standards for your roadways. You must meet these standards for your water infrastructure, for your sewer infrastructure. And so we would then be assured that as they develop, they're developing to our standards, so that should be annexed. Uh, in the future that we're not having to replace much of it.
And what would happen, and again, this is just out of curiosity, like what would happen if you were that single family home? Where you drill a well and then 10 years down the road, wherever you now, an enclave kind of, as we surround it with other annexations, so you're now part of the town. What happens is like, is that well now city water or is that they just have a well and they don't give municipal service some water or? It's a great question. I was just kind of curious on that more.
Answer that for you if you'd like. Yeah, so your, your, your town code requires that, um. Uh, all properties in the town connect to the town's water system. And so, um, as part of the annexation agreement, when you bring property in, you basically negotiate obtaining their water rights. And you most likely require them to basically, um, shut down that well and connect to the town's water. That's the standard practice.
When, when somebody redoes this, uh. Three mile plan. I'd like it if the. Title for each area could be at the top of the page rather than at the bottom of the preceding page.
Yeah, thank you for, for noticing that the formatting of this was a challenge, so.
Any other comments or concerns or questions or changes with regard to the three mile plan?
It's not exactly on this three mile plan, it's probably, and I don't mean to kick the horn's nest on this one, but I was asked three times today about it.
Okay.
Because it's on the what's happening in BV conversation of the Alpine view, uh, development or whatever. But in, in their language in their proposal in multiple areas, they said. The town has agreed to this and this and this, and a lot of it are kind of areas that are around the master plan. It, it just seems like they, they were saying town already agreed to all these things, I don't think did. Uh, we have, or maybe we have, I don't know, or, but it, it seems to kind of. Apply, but I got asked three times today about that and why the town agreed to listen. So this may not be the right time, but it seemed like it, it, it kind of translates in terms of the vision plan of what we hope to be growing and eventual growth.
So it's a, it's a perfect example, a current example of, of the IGA at work. So as you all know, the stack house annexation did not go through. That landowner went and applied to the county with a very similar concept. The county then essentially is, um, not allowing that application to move forward past preliminary plat. Or even to preliminary plat approval without that pre- annexation. Which has not been requested yet from the applicant or the developer to from town. So there are a variety of things that we had already talked about during annexation process with the developer. That would need to be included in that pre- annexation, it would be a board decision. So the town has not provided that yet. That makes sense.
Yeah, I know, man, it's a good example of. I did, yeah, that's really helpful when we get into. Uh, I was asked three different times about why we already agreed to all these things, I'm like, maybe they just are in their code and so they said agree, I don't know.
Personally, I don't engage in those discussions on that forum, if people want to engage, they can.
Oh, no, this is not work.
At work.
Um, I had noticed that too, because I had seen that and read the information and I didn't understand how some of the language seemed to mirror the. Three mile plan that we had just been given and it seemed like this information was probably shared with the developer of the county. I don't know, a while ago, and so it's kind of like, how comes we get the. I, and I, and I don't know the process of how that works, but like how we got it this Friday. It seems like this information may have been discussed with the developer or the county farm advance. And maybe that's possible how it goes, but I kind of was like, well, shoot, I would like it that early too. Why don't, why do we get it at last minute and they get.
The draft, full, the full draft plan was available back in June publicly through the planning zoning commission.
Okay.
So the county had access to that, the applicant had access to.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense. Gotcha.
Is there a recommendation by planning and zoning?
Yeah, planning and zoning, uh, reviewed this plan and recommended its, its adoption be a resolution. I think number sixty six, it's in your packet.
And we have several amendments to it. Um, may I go through those, um, so that we can get one, one motion that will include the amended tables? So Paula, what I have is, uh, on area one, land uses. After commercial uses should include add small and large multi-family housing.
Just a second, let me, let me pull it up, I should have printed it out, I wasn't aware we were going to be doing amendments, I apologize.
And speak up a few, feel like I miss any of them or. Get them wrong. Page is the fifty seven?
Now that's not worthy.
Fifty seven at the bottom, you're referring to me when I mentioned the residential and the, so in the land uses block at the very bottom on page fifty. Fifty seven of air, it's area one, Beavista Highway Commercial, down in that little land uses box. Ted, residential, is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, small and large multi-family housing.
The resolution is on page fifty one.
Just say fifty one. It's where the resolution is.
So the resolution, but you're going to be doing amendments to the three mile plan.
Yeah.
Jeff, would it be appropriate to just modify resolution number sixty six to say, um, something like. Attached tier two as amended in exhibit A?
Yeah, I mean, basically, as long as we're clear with the amendments being proposed are, um, I would, I would just say attached tier two is exhibit A. And then the motion would be to make the appropriate amendments to exhibit A.
Cause has everybody seen all the amendments that you're proposing, Libby?
I think so, I mean, we've been talking about them tonight.
Okay.
And they know the pages. Yeah, there are very many.
Okay, just maybe, so you have page, you will go by the page number that's in the packet?
Fifty seven.
Okay.
In the last block. After commercial uses, it should say commercial uses and small and large multi-family housing. On page sixty five. Area two should be area ten. That's it, really?
Yeah.
So. And we're happy with that, then I would. Uh, like a motion to approve. It's the resolution number sixty six, which is on page fifty one. I should say exhibit A as amended, no, just exhibit A, because you'll fix it first.
Should he say as amended or no?
It'll just be exhibit A, I think.
Will be amended exhibit A.
Yeah, I'll make a resolution to prove or make a motion to prove resolution number sixty six with exhibit A amended.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
So Rowan Hilton Hanga. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Great, thank you. Good job. There's no rest. So now go on to the house affordability code audit.
Thank you. So the staff report is on page eighty five, but I think we'll be using a, a pre-flight presentation that I put together. As you all know, refreshing your memories from last meeting, you all heard, uh, recommendations from consultants after conducting a pretty thorough. Uh, community engagement, um, stakeholder engagement and code audit process. On their recommendations on how to tweak our code to create a better environment for affordable housing. As you remember. Um, the, the whole premise of the recommendation was creating what they call an affordable housing zoning incentive. Um, for purposes of speaking clearly, I would just call it the incentive. Um, in the, the very end of their report, which I referenced, but did not include again in the packet. Was a discussion about the differences between this incentive and inclusionary zoning. Which we discussed very briefly in our water discussions just now, this evening. Um, they are not the same thing. It very basically put an incentive or in the way that it's being recommended is, uh, just that. It's an optional incentive, seeking to create a more friendly environment for development, if the development is what we want. Whereas inclusionary zoning is a, a restriction. Um, you must do X, Y, Z if you want to build. That's either build a unit or pay a fee, right? So for a variety of reasons, uh, that were enumerated in the report, the consultants were recommending, starting with the incentive. If after a period of evaluation, we felt it wasn't producing the results we wanted, then perhaps relook at inclusionary zoning or other changes. So that's the overall direction of the report. You all have requested that I come back to, um, with more of a staff perspective on those recommendations. Uh, which I sought to do in the staff report, um, and I'm just summarizing on this slideshow. I don't want to take too much time going line by line, so if you go to the next slide, Lisa. Um, I've grouped these, um, into two major buckets. One is, you know, what staff is, is recommending, we, we start looking at now. Um, and the other is sort of weight and evaluate. Um, or. Really, you know, one example was, um, water from the report, which I didn't even include in this list, because I knew we were talking about it earlier. But there's a variety of things that we could do, like cost sharing of infrastructure, that I just don't think are our next logical step. Um, I think our next logical step is following most recommendations from my consultants and evaluating how that works. Uh, and then moving from there. Um, on the left, which we'll go through a little bit, um, I sort of highlighted in red or outlined in red. The four pieces that are, are what I consider to be quote unquote, the package of the affordable housing zoning incentive. So if you recall, the consultant mentioned that. Taken together, these can create a meaningful incentive for developers. Uh, to create projects, build projects that are eligible, which we'll talk about in a moment, that meet our housing needs. Um, if we only choose one of them to implement, but not the others. We start to water down that incentive to where developers may not actually see as an incentive at all and may not. Choose to develop the kind of housing that we're looking for. And so I, I, the overarching recommendation from me and from staff is that we approach it in that manner. If we're going to implement number one, I would highly recommend we implement two through four. Um, and vice versa within that red outline. Numbers five and six on that screen, um, are across the entire code and could be taken or even, you know, um, outside of the zoning consent. Um, as could chapter fifteen and, and other recommendations, so let's go to the next slide. A real brief note that I'm seeking your direction tonight and we're not considering code changes tonight. Um, I would take your direction, much like you gave in the water discussion. Go back with the consultants, with legal, with other staff. And actually draft changes that would then work their way through the code defined process. Um, whether that be through planning and zoning commission and to you or directly to you. Go ahead. The most important underpinning of the. The most important underpinning of the affordable housing zoning incentive is this idea that we want to incentivize housing that meets our community. We don't necessarily want to just carte blanche incentivize housing or incentivize development, right? Because we know that the market's not building what our community needs right now. Therefore, at the very foundation of this idea is to create a set of parameters or criteria that would define what we're seeking as a community. If a developer is coming to us with a project that beats the criteria, then they qualify for the incentives, which we'll talk about in a moment. So this slide represents the consultant's recommendation, which was developed in concert with stakeholders, staff and community, as well as really relying on data from the housing needs assessment to say, what do we need? And what could we reasonably expect to be built without actually offering cash subsidies? Again, we we remember that obtaining affordable housing in our development requires both favorable environment and subsidies, depending on what level of affordability we're going for. So as it's currently conceived, the eligibility criteria would be first and foremost, you have to de-restrict all of whatever your building developer to be occupied by a primary occupant, i.e. not vacation homes, not short-term rentals, not second homes. These projects, if you want to qualify for the incentive, would have to be the primary occupants here. That's first and foremost. Then, depending on whether you're building a rental project or a for-sale project, you would need to meet one of the other criteria. On the rental side, we have A through D. I apologize. It's hard to see from the screen. The the idea being that either all of your project is de-restricted for affordability levels on A, half of it's de-restricted for a deeper level of affordability, but the rest is not, which is B. C, that maybe you're you're committing to a not quite as good affordability, but the housing authority has an ownership stake in your development and therefore there's more control and more long-term community benefit to be at. Or D, recognizing that we can't foresee all the circumstances in which somebody might propose to meet our community needs. And so leaving the door open for another proposal, but that it would need to be, it would need to pass muster by the by the housing authority. Similar sets of criteria, but with different numbers on the for-sale side. Again, harkening back to housing needs assessment that the the folks that are looking for rental products are earning less as households and therefore need to incentivize AMI ranges that are lower for rental products versus folks that are ready for homeownership are often looking for homeownership in slightly higher AMI levels. So that's the rationale behind. So again, this would be sort of the the sieve, if you will, or the the filter through which we would access incentive. So everything else that we talk about in the next, I think, four or five slides, you would not get unless you meet these criteria. These criteria are absolutely open for your modification. And as I mentioned earlier in the water discussion, these may form a great lens or a great basis for creating a set aside for water. If you if you choose to pursue that, right? What if projects that qualified under this incentive had a certain number of SFEs available to them each year, distinct from regular development? I don't know, but it'd be interesting to think about this as a criteria for water as well as for for zoning. We'll keep moving and then we can come back with with questions. So the the next the the sort of meat of the zoning incentive is this two-column approach. It's saying, look, if you want to just build market rate housing, we're not trying to change the change rules. You you qualify for the left-hand column, column in black, which is what you can get today. If you're willing to meet the criteria that we just talked about, then you could qualify for the red column, the column on the right, which largely involves smaller lot sizes, i.e. more density, more units. Slightly higher lot coverages for the most part. That's basically at smaller lot sizes is the primary incentive there, which allows developers to build more units and offset the reduced profit they will get by meeting the criteria. And if they're going to earn less profit, at least they can build more homes and hopefully meet their margins or. I didn't want to dive too deeply into the details here, but I'm happy to answer questions. We move on to the next slide, I think, is height bonus. This is one where I know we've had many discussions as a board. And I would say that while the whole thing is sort of a package, I would say that these are probably the most open for picking and choosing. If if the board does not feel comfortable with with some of these height bonuses, then I don't think that derails the wholesome incentive. But height bonuses can be a very powerful tool incentivizing what what we want for housing. So the consultants recommended offering a ten-foot height bonus essentially across the R-three, MU-one, MU-two highway commercial and mixed-use main street zone districts. Again, direction tonight, not a decision, but I'd love to hear thoughts on this either now or when we come back in a moment. The next slide does demonstrate where that would apply in town. So the the red outlines are those zone districts that I just mentioned that might be eligible for a height bonus. As you can see, it's really the highway corridor in those identity areas. The next slide. Again, two-column approach, but this time with uses, what can you actually use your property for? There's a variety of changes here that would allow for more density on residential zone districts and other zone districts that currently is not allowed as heaps. So for instance, if you look at the second column or a second row up, small multifamilies. Right now in an R-one zone district, you would have to get a specialty use permit in order to build that project. So this is saying that if you meet those criteria, i.e. you have those de-restrictions and you meet those affordability, then you could do that as a permitted use by right. You still would have to follow the other aspects of our code, which require site plan review and those other pieces, right? But it would be one less layer of review and therefore lower entitlement costs, holding costs, all those things for developers. And that same idea of moving moving through the other uses, trying to open up more uses for the things that we want to see while keeping the everyday development where it is today, really not changing. The only thing that would change for everyday development is allowing small multifamily in the R-one point five zone district with a specialty use permit. Whereas today, that's not allowed. Moving on to parking, I know we talked about this a little bit with the consultants. Taking the direction that I heard, the feedback that I heard from the board during that discussion, I'm putting this forward as a as a recommendation that if folks meet those criteria that we just talked about around affordability and de-restrictions, that they would be eligible to be considered for parking reductions. That those wouldn't automatically come, but that staff or that the approving body will have the case-by-case judgment to say for this project in its context, with maybe the on-street parking it has or the regional context it has, yes, reduced parking makes sense. Or in this context, no, it doesn't. So that's sort of the the approach that I took based on your discussions on the parking car. So I think one more slide if you would. Oh, right. So process. So those are the things that would change actual dimensional standards, so to speak, in the code. The other set of recommendations within the incentive incentive from the from the consultants were essentially looking at lowering the level of approval for projects that meet the criteria. So on the far-left column is what kind of process it is, minor subdivision, site plan, et cetera. In the middle is what those processes currently require. And on the right in red, there's only three changes that would be affected by this recommendation. But it's saying that if developers are are proposing to build these de-restricted or affordable units or developments that meet the criteria, then they've already sort of passed that layer of review of do we want this as a community? And so we would lower the approval level by one. So you can see for the third row down, a site, major site plan would currently require planning and zoning approval via public hearing. If this recommendation went through, that would be administrative decision. Still the same rigor applied from an engineering and review standpoint, it would just be approved at the administrative level, so a public hearing. But I think that's all for the incentive, the affordable housing zoning incentive. So I want to pause there before we move on and ask for feedback, thoughts on on that package, so to speak.
One question I had was the, as you said, like we kind of need to take the whole package because it's not just one piece. It wasn't part of that. And I know you said you'll look at the shared cost things later because you don't want to go that far possibly. But another one was, you know, the waiving of fees for caps. And I thought all of those are part of the the recommendations that they had, that you need all of these things if you want to incentivize it. And it seems like we're already taking a good chunk out. And is it, you want to just start here to see if we get any bikes? If we don't, then you maybe add some of the others in or just kind of like what what that kind of top process is since they were saying like this whole thing is kind of what.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right that if the consultants were the ones implementing their recommendations, they would implement all of them. I do think it's more prudent, especially given our other holistic constraints and considerations that are before you all around. Infrastructure, water availability, water infrastructure, that jumping into waiving fees right away may be a drastic change. Whereas allowing ourselves to fully think through through the process that I outlined before, that we would take, undertake now to change our code, dimensional standards, new standards, would allow us to say to see, does that move in? Are we actually getting folks taking us up on this incentive? And if not, are we hearing that, well, if you only waived the tap fee, then I would. Or if you only did X, I would. That might help us inform next steps that that you may consider. I will say that none of this is gonna is a silver bullet, even if we waived tap fees. Tap fees are only, you know, maybe a one percent of any project.
Yeah, that's one example, the things that were in there.
And so I do think that the package that that staff has put forward at the moment is not as holistic as the consultants would have liked to see, but I do think it's it's maybe a logical next step for where we are as a community. And then we would, we need to evaluate, see where it goes.
And then the other would be the definition of AHZI. So like basically for them to the one thing I'm kind of fixed on is taking away the public accountability for board trustees. Moving it to the administrative, which I get, but I think anytime you take away public accountability in anything should be taken very seriously because the public needs an outlet. If they're upset with the development, they, you know, could recall us, they can vote against you next time and it's all administrative that don't have that. So I don't know. That was one thing that I did kind of practice. I think it it anytime you move from public accountability to administrative, there could be consequences, but also people lose voice to a certain extent. And one of my questions there is, will we have a clear definition of, since there's a lot of recommendations here, but what would, like the stuff I said, that had to hit all of these different points to then qualify under the standards of evidence?
Yeah, so on the fourth slide, where we talked about the eligibility criteria. If if this direction is something the board would like to pursue, the next step would be to actually draft that definition in code language that would define the eligibility criteria and define the incentive. What is what is the affordable housing zoning incentive? And why are we okay as a community? We're saying if you're doing these things, we are okay with plus one. Right? And is that something that we want to consider? Right now, that's a very conceptual, the work to be done, moving forward to make that more.
Yeah, the way I see it with this is it's not as like, it's it's not as much taking the public out of it, but, you know, shortening the process so where the public still has input, but not lengthening it for a long time. Where you have to get the, you have the public hearing with with the planning zoning. And then you have to wait till you have a public hearing after that with the trustees, you know.
I get the annoying, the shorting the bureaucracy and how it is a pain for a developer and it's a drain on staff. Like, I totally get all that. I'm saying it. Like, part of the reason you have a board is you have, like, you know, Cindy, who's been here her entire life, and I've been here a year and a half. And you have perspective of, you know, those working in town, you know, the hospitality industry. And it's having all those different perspectives to still say yay or nay to something over, you know, ten units or something. It's still an important thing. And I'm not saying I'm against that idea. I just want to make sure we, you know, fully weigh that before that make that call and have a clear understanding of what that definition is. But they're heading, like you said, it'll be more submitted and this is all, you know, scary, like, correct.
Yeah, and you you all, and and I would say if the code language that would come forward from this would have two public hearings to go through with committee, but in order to become adopted with with input from the NZ and input from you all. So I don't think it's a responsibility that that we're asking you to take lightly this idea of getting rid of public hearings in this case. Because I think it is a big, but I I would say that if it's the direction you all would like to see, then that's the force to figure out how that works.
For your definition to first, or your process.
I mean, I I I agree with just because that's exact topic, that's something I agree with Peter on is we are elected elected officials to be here and that's part of the job. And kind of don't like the idea of being like, oh, you know, like for the sake of urgency, like let's push it along. Urgency has more power than, and I don't always think that's a great thing. I think things take a little longer, but it helps us make sure we get it right. That's what we should do. And I don't know if I was on the other side of it, I'd want the opportunity to to have those times of common comment or have a voice, set feeling like, well, or maybe you're out of town, you can't come to the first one, but you come to the second one or whatever. But I don't know. I I agree. I think it's our role to do that. So specifically, I think for the board trustee stuff, I I don't like the idea of not having or having our role essentially pushed out to just for urgency sake. I I don't think that's a great idea.
And do we have evidence or information on how big the role is? I mean, it's like that way we could know, oh, we actually do go forward, this this will open up the process a lot more. Or is it, again, it's a kind of crap shoot to see if it works?
It's it's a evidence gathered through both the consultant's expertise and working in other jurisdictions and their stakeholder engagement here, talking with developers and talking with others. And I I think at the at the end of the day, I 100% take your direction, board on if this is worth creating code language for. If it's not, then fair enough. I do think that the whole premise is that if someone's coming forward to do a development with de-restrictions in place that meet our community housing needs that you all have established. I would ask, it's not for urgency's sake to get rid of this, it's for the housing's sake that you all have established as a priority. So I think it's an important lead frame. We're not doing this to do a favor for developers. We would be doing this to meet our housing needs that you all have established. Now, if you want those housing needs to come before you every time, that's absolutely fair. And and this doesn't have to go forward.
What if it has to do with something that deals with the water issue? And it's just pushed forward where we don't have a chance to talk about it as much as obviously it's something that we were talking about earlier tonight. Would that play into it? Like, oh, hey, it hits this need, but we only have how many SFEs left? Is it, you know, shouldn't that be something that?
No, we would rely on policy that you've created for that.
Okay.
So it would be beholden to any policy of that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think we've been working a lot over the years to really put in place really good policy in order so we don't have to see everything here in these meetings. We used to sit in meetings and decide whether daycare was appropriate for town. And then we changed that policy so we didn't have to see that. We used to review every single fee waiver here because we didn't, that was the policy at the time, was we would review every single fee where they and and decide whether that happened. So I think as long as we're putting in place awesome policies to support this housing, I'm not really worried about how it is put together because we have already decided on what we like and 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 the direction that we're going. As with everything else on this, yes, like it all, do it all. As much as we can do for affordable housing, we don't have. we don't have the millions of dollars to input into our town to make affordable housing. If we can do any of these to incentivize developers, I think that's a win. And I I hope that it could help people because we're not a town that can influx millions and millions of dollars to do things. So anyways, we can incentivize people to bring this to our town. I think it's a win.
I think we should have a public information campaign too, to let the developers know about this. You know, even if they're small developers, if we do make a change like this, make it obvious to them that that they should come and talk to us about building some affordable housing here.
And that was, if I'm not mistaken, what the consultant said to a certain extent is like, look, you should be doing these things, not necessarily developers you're talking to on a regular basis today. Because a lot of them aren't really built for it, but that there are people who specialize in affordable housing projects and know how to get funding and do everything, but these are key things that they're kind of looking for. So this just kind of waves the flag for you, saying we're open business for this. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Should we suggest the Chamber of Commerce? They are publicity arm.
We can talk about.
I don't, I don't know that.
I'm writing my hand.
Okay.
Am I allowed to ask a question for clarification?
I don't know, but go ahead, please.
It was just, I think it was on the very first slide, and it gave the percentages of AMI. They seem really high for what I've been seeing for the percentages for workforce housing, not even affordable housing, but workforce housing is more like 60, 80. And those are, if I'm reading, I can't really see it, but they look like they're over 100.
Yeah, so the the reason for that is that this is not paired with any money. The cost to build those units is still going to be largely the same for developers under these rules as under any other rules. So, um, if somebody is coming forward without any other subsidy, we would, if we set these limits at 60%, we would have no one take us up on it. And that's fine. I'm not saying we have to set them at these limits. But from the perspective of the cost of construction influencing development in AMIs.
Yeah.
Um, we can't expect to simply put in place a rule that says 80% and then get 80% housing if we don't also have millions of dollars to invest in that house.
What a commander.
Yeah, in in your conversations, would that not even work if it's the, say, 60% for the other, but the the whatever the orange, I can't really see which one's which, but the other half of it is, uh, you know, Sally, but you do whatever you want to make as much money. You know what I mean? Like, like in that, because it seems like a lot of proposals we're seeing, like, we're trying to keep it between this 80 to 120 or whatever, and it seems like you're trying to by trying to do the best across the board, you're kind of helping nobody, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I mean, to me, honestly, if I had to venture a guess what people might take us up on, it would be B for the rental products and for for sale, it would be saying I will de-restrict half of my development to some lower AMI, and I'll be able to do whatever I want with the other half still with the primary occupancy requirement.
And you think 80 is the floor?
Uh, the consultants and I've in conversation with stakeholders and based on their experience felt like that was the right number. Um, we could try a different number and see if it works.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of weird when we come into try to read something over two days and try to talk to you about something you work in every single day, all day, like get your job, you know, so I know some of our questions are kind of dumb, but that's why I'm asking you in terms of you talk to folks on a regular basis, you might have a good idea of yeah, you know, once we get to that, no matter how much we charge, your market rate, we do all short term rentals and stuff and make it up. So I just didn't know if those are part of the conversation, so.
I and I do think that even, for example, rental products, um, that I think that's still a stretch with the primary occupancy requirement on the whole thing. Um, because they they would not be able to have any short term rentals, they would not be able to have folks that live out of county have a weekend getaway rental.
But what if we did, where half of them were primary occupancy for 80 or whatever below, then the others don't have your primary occupancy?
Yeah.
Would that change it? Number, do you think?
I think it would. I could, or it could.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would say based on the discussion amount that we have on these, uh, that's sort of the intent for staff, um, you know, the the concerns that you have or expressions of different topics. He'll be taking that back and looking at that. And then also probably if if it deems necessity, we could do a little more public engagement, talking with developers, maybe incorporating, you know, chamber and other other areas and to kind of what their thoughts are on that too. We could expand on that a little bit if we needed to. Now, just to get the right number, I know you've already done some of that. I know that there's been a lot of that as part of it. But that's not to say that you can't do a little bit of your own in-house research and asking some questions and getting as part of a review process with tightening that a little bit.
I'd like to hear from the rest of the Westsiders over here. Yeah.
Report.
No. I want to hear it all.
Yeah. Uh, Sue's ready.
Go ahead. I, uh, uh, just, I appreciate, first of all, that you, how you've kind of compartmentalized these things for our consideration. I did. I do have some concerns about parking, and I like the solution that you've that you've, I mean, the least the temporary setup that you've got go are recommending case by case uh, review. I guess you've mentioned that the approving body that sometimes would be us and sometimes P and Z, or how how would that, or would maybe also be administrative?
It would depend on the type of development being proposed.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, and and so right now, the only development that you all make a decision on unless a site plan is called up would be a major subdivision.
Right, okay.
Other development reviews are decided by planners.
And I just, I do worry a little bit about that because it is a very hot button issue for people, even did hear the consultant say people would sort of self-regulate and uh, not probably apply for it or try to be in these units if they could only have one car or whatever, but um, I mean, I I just feel like if that can change, it's kind of, um, it just becomes a really big issue for some people, even if they've agreed to it, they still are going to want more parking sometimes. But at any rate, I appreciate that that what you're trying to do is kind of the that case by case review. Let's see, I, uh, see, the, uh, this was not something you brought up, but, um, on the thing with the referral agencies. Um, what did you think about the delay equals consent? I mean, uh, I mean, do you think that's really feasible if they, the agencies don't come to the table in a timely fashion that you could just move ahead? As far as that.
Essentially what we do now with a few exceptions.
Okay.
Um, we, it it's, we recognize that it's it's not um, appropriate to do that with things like sewer and electricity. So we don't necessarily take that view on those. But other referral agency comments that they chronically don't respond, we don't hold up development review for those responses to come in.
Okay. So, um, here, um, on the height recommendations, I guess I have trouble sort of visualizing what 10 feet is going to look like. Can you point me to anything in town that's 45 feet?
Uh, so the only thing that's close to 45 feet right now is the courthouse and the orphan.
Okay.
Um, so
Collegiate Commons is 42.
Okay.
And, uh, the hotel, Surf Hotel is about about the same height, about 40. 40 feet.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. I think both of those were variance procedures. Is that right?
Uh, Collegiate Commons, that's mixed, uh, yeah. They, we had to do like one foot. Yeah, there was a a little variance on that. Yeah.
Okay, that's high.
It is, it's tall. Yeah.
Um, and what does 45 get you that say 35 wouldn't in terms of, or I mean, or even 40?
A four story.
Four story.
And there's no. More units and able to spread your costs across.
Okay. Yeah, okay. All right, um, that's that's for me for now.
Mark, would you like to go?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things, um, as far as related to what, um, Tristi Cobb was saying about the the heights. Um, as far as the MU MS, um, as HPC, were they giving some or some feedback on that?
Yeah, um, so the the consultants, this recommendation was not based on HPC input. And that's part of the reason why I prefaced this slide with, um, I think this slide in particular probably needs a more nuanced approach if we're going to move forward with any height bonuses. Um, I would anticipate that mixed use Main Street would not be on the list.
True.
High bonus.
True.
Um, I pu- I put the entire table on there because I wanted to represent what the consultants felt was the most appropriate. Um, but I do agree with you that HPC would probably not not get on board with that.
The second thing, um, Lisa, if you go back to the process. Sliding there, please.
The second slide, I think. Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I get the feedback from as far as this kind of feel like we're losing control, but I look at the the people. P and Z, I mean, this is kind of their wheelhouse. This is what they do. Um, I think we should trust them because there's a city making process, and and that's because I think they do a great job. Like I said, this is more than a wheelhouse is what they do. And, um, and I think we'll be involved. I mean, I see some joint meetings there. I see public hearings. So I don't think we'll be out of loop. I think the important people for this process are up there, and I I approve with with that chart there.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Well, I still think that we try to, ought to go for working with real estate companies that work at a reduced rate. If they're worried about pinching pennies and expecting contractors, it should work both sides.
Does everybody understand our comment there? That we would be, um, choosing to have realtors who would have a lesser commission rate.
Mm-hmm. We legally do that?
Yes.
We wouldn't always have, we wouldn't always have the opportunity.
I'm a licensed Realtor, and yes, you told me to do that.
Wouldn't always have the opportunity, right? So if somebody comes in with property they've owned for a number of years and they want to subdivide, um, we wouldn't necessarily be able to look back at a transaction any number of years ago and say, well, you didn't get a reduced commission, so therefore you don't qualify. I think the implementation of that might be pretty tricky. If we put that out there as a preference or as bonus points somehow, I think that would be really interesting to see what effect that might have. Um, but I I wouldn't know how we could even reapply that criteria as a as a, as a must have in order to qualify.
Height benefit, um, in the past meetings, you know, um, and my old buddy could be out out booted on that very easily, but I just do not think four stories fit our community at this point. Um, the only time that we're involved with anything anymore, if it's a major subdivision. I'm not, I'm not that crazy about giving up control. We but planning and zoning might do a beautiful job, but we have a job to do too. We've already given up a lot of control in the last few years of what comes here for building. And so for major subdivision.
The way this structure is a disrupt our like disrupt our structure of how many we're allowed in. I didn't that makes sense. Like, if all of a sudden there was an influx of STRs, it's really like, hey, everybody can have an EDU.
These are ones where they live there, right? The person lives there and they have an ADU. And this, is that just allowed? I mean, it's licensed, but is it counted? Is it counted in the?
Oh, I guess percent.
It would if it's on commercial, possibly like business owners.
Or is it trust?
Yeah.
Or else maybe.
That's all going to depend on what is finally decided in things. You know, you already have your um, short terminal cap set depending on types of ownerships and things like that, as well as the owning and things. So now if you go looking at doing something different, we're going to have to evaluate it at that time to see what the impact is. It's kind of hard to, you know, project what it's going to be when we don't even know what A, B, and C is.
And that would be part of the work we make forward. If if the overall idea is something you all want to see explored, then we would be figuring out the impact. Yeah, I mean, I really like this approach of ADU stuff, like in terms of trying to get what we want by giving some others what they want to certain extent, right? Like a little bit of understanding like developers or, you know, if if you have property, you want to do short term rentals, but we need long term rentals, so it incentivizes them. I I I like the approach with the ADUs opening it up to commercial.
Which will be long term, right? If you give them one, like, commercial properties, I assume it would be long term, not short.
I think employee housing too. I mean, it would be employee housing.
Okay, okay. I would want to make sure we're not giving that away than them just STRing it.
Uh, yeah, I want to be be clear that if it sounds like we'll explore this idea, and the way it might end up being proposed as code language may differ from this based on these other implications. As we dive into STR regulations, as we dive into how this affects the work um, uses in our code, those types of things we want, we'll make sure all that's assessed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Comments?
Things good. I like it all. Anything that we can do for housing, yes.
Yeah. So Joseph, do you want to, um, try to consolidate these comments and come back to us?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'll, I will do. Um, I'm not going to try to commit to any sort of timeline, but I'll I'll take the feedback. Consultants start to think first and foremost, really, in order to that slideshow, what is that definition of the criteria? When we actually start converting into a code language, what does it look like? Then how do we start implementing, um, or drafting?
Yeah, it sounds like we are divided in terms of, um, the height, height bonus and the administrative approvals. I mean, whether they're, whether we're involved in those approvals. It seems like those are the main points of.
Yeah, I could see the height being my thought on the highest, uh, like what Joseph said, like, keep it out of mixed use Main Street. I don't see 45 feet being a good thing for Main Street, but I could see it in our three possibly and probably definitely on the highway. I I could see those as good places for that.
So tie it to the zone districts is what you do.
Yeah, you know, I don't think we need giant apartment buildings on Main Street. That's not what we're going for, and I'm sure the historic preservation committee would agree. Um, so.
That's interesting because when we were talking about the the height, uh, that's adjustments that are proposed for the historic preservation. Um, adjustments for design standards, that was another one where this was sort of a a discussion of whether to attach it to just the regular zoning. Um, make accommodations for that, look at it with the zoning again, as opposed to putting it in the affordable housing portion or the design standards for historic preservation, doing something with it, but looking at it for its own. So we continue to explore that too.
So, uh, just like, I I know we aren't discussing this tonight, but I do two things. I want to, uh, thank you for just turning this all of this around so quickly after the last. Just like, I know we aren't discussing this tonight, but I do two things. I want to thank you for just turning this, all of this around so quickly after the last meeting. It's a lot of work and also your restraint on the sort of evaluate and revisit. Topics. I feel like some of the ones I'm concerned about just for future reference are just. You know, all the incentives that they recommended, whether it's for land or for taps or for infrastructure sharing, cost sharing. I worry about what we'd be giving away and where we'd get the money to do that. So anyway, it's just something to hold on to for later. But thank you.
So is there more, Joseph? We're ready.
I think the only other one was the community benefit ordinance. This recommendation is, is really saying we would work with, with legal to assess whether or not. We could incorporate a community benefit ordinance or language into our chapter 15 of our municipal code, which is our chapter that deals with annexations. That chapter is, I don't know if it is or not, but it's really short. If it's the shortest chapter in our municipal code, basically says we're going to follow state statute. But the consultants recommended that if we were to adopt or include community benefit language there. That developers would be very clear. If they're going to ask us for annexation, then they must do X, Y, Z. They must meet the community benefit as we define it in that chapter. So it's very much in line with some of the discussions that, that you all have had. What that actually says, we can take a stab at and probably coordinate with other staff and water and. Other concerns as well as comp plan and collective vision. But this is the other recommendation that the consultants made that I did feel like I don't really see a downside. So if someone's wanting to join town, we would want to say, this is what we expect.
Is that it? Did you get from us what you need?
I did. Thank you.
So trustee staff interaction. What would you like to start?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I attended the renewal festival this weekend and it was a really quite an amazing, small festival that I can't speak highly. Enough about, I'm a huge fan of Lee Strings, as some of you know, so it's even better that my favorite musician is here in, in our town. But it was really awesome to meet a lot of people who came to this from all over the country and just show how blown away they were with the. The location and being here in town. You know, I, I spoke and met with Scotty Stone who runs Bonfire. People in the land and felt like there was just a lot of great things about that and pulling in a lot of local businesses and people to help support. The festival, you know, and I spoke with some business owners on Sunday who got inundated by all the festival people. So. They brought a lot of business to people here in town as well. So. It's a great thing. If you want to hear more about it, we'd be happy to tell you how awesome Lee Strings is.
Nice that he comes near. It's amazing.
It's shocking. He's the biggest bluegrass like star in the world. He chooses here for his festivals. So we're very lucky for that.
Yeah, I kind of just, I realized like throughout our discussion, previous discussions, like. I keep trying to shoehorn in this 60% AMI and below group within town because it's where the housing assessment says. We have the greatest need and it's the people I work with every day who they can't even live in their van anymore and they're having to leave. And so I, instead of trying to shoehorn in this issue to talking about water rights or shoehorn it into. Carbonite or any other development we're doing. I was wondering if we can actually. Have a working session or maybe like a small group to think of creative ways to actually. Deal with our workforce. You know, I think first off, having a real understanding of. What it takes to be fully employed for our economy to work here, like in the hospitality industry or anywhere else like what? What is it like? Talk to business owners in town. What is it that they actually need in terms of a healthy workforce? Like what does that number look like? What is the average salary? Kind of like just have a real, instead of trying to, like I said, I, I realize I've been like a turtle punch bowl whenever I can't mention these things, but it's like. How can we actually address a problem that I think we all recognize as a major problem instead of looking at this, this is impossible. Quit trying to add it to this or whatever, like how can we, if it's. You know, it's a dual partnership with the county where we use county land, where we have municipal services that run to it and we have. Electrical and water hookups for people who are living in the trailer but working town. Qualify for that if you are an employee here. I don't know, like that's just something like I'm just throwing out there, but if we can have some sort of. Session discussion or if it's already been happening, so we can present on that of what are the real needs? How are we addressing it or how could we be doing it more creatively possibly? But you know, I think Devin has mentioned before and I kind of feel the same way of. I do feel like a little bit like our local economy is kind of a house of cards that can crumble at any moment, just given. It's not just a housing constraint. There's more to that. It's like I said, some people can't even afford to work here and live in the van. Or their trailer, except move from one BLM land to another, they're running out of space. And so, I don't know if there's some way we can. Kind of look at that problem in an isolated issue of our workforce. What does it take to have our actual industry run? And what can we do to maybe address it?
Yeah. I mean, you even look at the restaurants and they're. Cause they're like when the prison guys are pulled off, you know, that narrowly killed some of the restaurants, I think.
In the busiest part of our summer, our most successful businesses had to close because there wasn't anyone to work there. So yeah, I definitely agree with a lot of that. I also think that there's a lot of things we can do by using our land, which we're doing with Carbon Street. We also have more land, so we can keep working on things like that. And I think also just to not get too narrow focused on this, like 60% AMI and over, there's, there's so much we can do to support all people. And if we can't hit that number, it's not that or nothing. I think that's a really important thing that I feel. That if we're moving forward and we're getting things done, if it's not all exactly 60, it's still helping a lot of people. And, and we can keep trying to shoot for that, but that's hard to shoot for unless we have tons of money.
But my point is that's where the majority of our workforce is, right? So if that's where the door of the workforce is. How do we address it? That's what I'm asking. I'm not saying that if we don't hit it, it's nothing. That's why I kept asking questions. It sounds like. Any actual formal development won't actually address that workforce is what I'm hearing.
You are interested in hearing more about how we build housing for that market?
Not just housing, like how, how do we just work with that workforce? Like, how do we make that workforce sustainable? In some way, that doesn't mean brick and mortar apartment buildings. Like I was saying, maybe it's hookups, maybe it's. Co-op with the, with different businesses who pay into some sort of community for seasonal living. I don't know. I'm just saying to have some sort of. Creative thinking around what is clearly one of the biggest needs according to the housing assessment, but also. Folks I work with, the regular basis you work with, we understand their fights and having to move and everything. So how can we address that issue? And it may not, like I said, housing is a big part of this, not all of it. So how can we? Look at that in, in, in a way that I'm, that's not being tagged on to something else necessarily.
Peter, I have a couple of thoughts on that. One is maybe we get Becky Gray back if she, she'd come talk to us and just see. I mean, some things have changed since we last talked with her, especially with a lot of the workforce leaving and just, just think in businesses having to close and that kind of thing. And just see what she could suggest or what her research in other communities might, might show that what they're doing just to kind of fill in some of the gaps here. But the other thing is, is this coffee thing that Heather's talking about. I mean, if that's bringing together a whole bunch of different leaders, maybe we could make it a topic or somehow it could become a topic. That you could facilitate or I don't know how it would work, but that we really get the questions out there and see what people could offer and see if some ideas emerge.
Yeah. Cause I think another part is just really understanding what is the issue, like the local businesses, because we, we know what the needs assessment might be, but. Businesses ultimately say, well, yeah, that's because we don't even have enough people to run our, like, you know, like.
Right.
So we actually have an understanding of what are the constraints are, are on with the different local businesses.
Yeah.
And the workforce. I mean, I know we can't hire people to save their life. So it's, I mean, we were starting to, but the point is. It's obviously a constraint. So how do we kind of look at a holistic approach to it? Instead of like I said, trying to tack it on to something else that's, that is helping a lot of people, but may not be exactly this.
Might add that the EDC might be a great person to generate shop. It might be a good role in a few employers that. Really have needs in that workforce realm and might be able to talk about the challenges that they've faced. I mean. Yeah, I think the, the question will really hinge on like what, what are you trying to get out of it that, that is towns to address?
Right.
What can town itself do in this space? And, and how do we, how do we find those levers so that you all can act on them versus hearing about the challenges that, that town is not equipped to address? And I think we would take some thought to put together a session either here or, or you all going out to find that information in a thoughtful way to get that information.
Right. Just how do we do a conjecture for the same way?
And also not putting it all on us as well. It's like, there's all these businesses that are building and building out and building out to like. Taking all these tourists and whatnot, and maybe they shouldn't be building it. Maybe that's not us to decide to, to help. Well, not to help them, but to like, you know, it's, it's a. If we keep building all these restaurants and there's no one here to work for them, then why are we building all these restaurants? So. It's just, it's a, it's a hard problem to figure out and to think about and, you know, or should people being paid more. Where all of a sudden in the town they can't afford, probably, but. That's one of the businesses, you know, it's like.
But I'm not saying it's an easy.
Yeah, there's, there's so many variables.
I'm just saying that I think that, you know, just like we can't be a sustainable town if we overuse our water and. You also can't be a sustainable town if you can't afford for people to work in your restaurant and you're no longer a fun tourist destination and then you're not selling anything. You know what I mean? Like it's, if these are all working pieces and it's just, I feel like that's one that is clearly a need and that we should try to find a way to delve deeper into. Like I said, not just us, but work with others in the community and.
Why don't you give us some thought to it and then talk about it at the next, next meeting, maybe make a proposal of what we could do. Work session over. An evening.
There's land up that will be soon be connected to Sunset Vista, the town owns that we could use at some point, hopefully. But there's a lot of things. So yeah, I appreciate bringing that up for sure.
Thanks, Peter.
I might be able to get Jake to come talk as a work session or. Open, you know, just about workforce and not just housing, but workforce in general and. The things that he sees and hears.
Yeah, you know, work with the chambers to get an idea of what it is.
I mean, I think that might be a good start at least, but I think, you know, again, it just reinforces, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of things that. You're all communicating need to be discussed and a lot of these things would be a part of comp plan in a longer term. As well, I know it's a longer term plan, but all of those things would be discussed as part of comprehensive plan that's the form for engaging the public on these different things. So. I don't know. I, I just feel like I did have a chance to do coffee with Jake and I know that. He would likely be willing to come talk if you wanted me to schedule something.
Would also be interesting to think about, you know, like a panel discussion, right? A couple of business owners. And you all are able to, it's less of a presentation from them and more of a question like. Hey guys, what can we as a town do? What do you do is appropriate for us? Where are you doing EDC? Where are you doing housing authority? Yeah, maybe even like a few restaurant managers. We just have a better idea of their staff. So again, it could just be a learning session to see where we're kind of at. But you're right. I think longer term, it is more of a comp plan as long as we control for. The transient population that's we still rely on as a economic driver, you know what I mean? Cause I think a lot of planes I've read, it's been a lot of folks who. Are homeowners here and are already kind of based and they're not necessarily the folks you need to target with different things, but I've agreed with you. It's just.
And I think it's why it's crucial that, you know, when you climb into that comp plan, it's really important to lay out that request for proposal. With thoughts that are unique to BV, you know, I mean, because we have a unique demographic here. And there are things that we would explore that maybe other communities haven't. So, but I mean, that's if we do the consultant. Way. I mean, I think Joseph and I will talk more about what part that can we do in-house. You know, because it does take away time that staff would have to do from other short-term planning, which there's really plenty of proposals on the table right now. So, but you know, that's the long-term picture as well. So. It's a balancing act of all the different things that we were talking about. I mean, and trying to figure out each piece has something. Water has its own things that we're, we're needing to do and we're looking at that separately. We're also looking at the audit separately. And then you got some design standards and things that are separately. So all these things combined, what's the vision? And again, what does the community really want? So.
You know, so second, all that. And if you do want any help for restoring and stuff, I'm on board to help. The only other thing, actually randomly I had coffee today with the mayor pro tem of Wheat Ridge, Rachel Holton. I think that's how you pronounce it. She also is part of or works with Bicycle Colorado, which actually is all about. Actually like bicycles is like more like transportation. It's a focus of that in potential funding opportunities depending on. I guess actually the three mile plan actually is a great thing to speak with her on a little bit and thinking of trail usage and what plans are in the future. Because with this, this organization, what I guess they have the ability to do is if you are looking to. Create more feasible pedestrian trails or systems so that people can get to, you know, their job versus using. You know, vehicles and such, you know, there might be something there and it's just like, well, shoot, as we have this, you know, focus potentially on moving out west and going down. Three or six and you know, just, and I know there's already, I believe there's things in the plans anyway with the Peak View Trail, I think, and some other things. But it was, it was really cool to speak with her and she left me a few pieces of information that anybody's interested in learning more about. That side of things. I'm happy to share that. But and he says it was really cool just to speak to somebody else in a little bit more of a larger. Area, larger county, but just kind of different fun ways to, I don't know. It was, it was enlightening and also nice to have somebody up, you know, to, you know. I don't know, the hard things about stuff too. It's, I'm like, oh, cool. It's not just like me or it's not just, you know, here or something. It's like, okay, cool. It's everywhere. And so it was a nice opportunity. And Paula, actually you helped me put that one together because you sent the email over that she had called. So thank you for helping.
That's what happens when you're the board of trustee receptionist. I could all. I don't know who to call back. That's very good.
Thank you. It was very, I had a very nice time.
Good job.
Sometimes I let them pile up and then I call them all.
And the one guy called twice. So. So I would have to say, if you do get messages from Lily and I to call somebody, if you don't call back, they call us.
I'll just do it.
Just FYI.
Duly noted. That's all.
Okay. Joseph?
I'm surprised you still asked me. But the only thing I wanted a little bit of direction on was. Another large subdivision, the homestead on Marquette Street is submitting their, submit or subdivision in our sketch plan application. And I wanted to get your direction on scheduling that joint meeting. You all provided the opportunity to join P and Z for this next week for the freshman edition. I didn't know if you were open to doing that again in mid-November or early December, or if that's something that. I think if we don't do that, we're probably looking at it next year as the earliest for that. So I just wanted to get. I think if we don't do that, we're probably looking at it next year as the earliest for that, so I just wanted to get some direction from you all. On that, so I can give the applicant some great expectations.
Worth waiting because the water is under pressure.
I I don't see any inherent value in that, only because sketch plan is is feedback for the developer, it's not approval. So if anything, you know, um being actively in water especially might provide more point of view back than.
Shall we send you what our availability is?
Sure, the the two P and Z meetings that are available are November sixteen or December seven. November sixteen or December seven.
I can make both of those.
Can't make the seventh of December. I can't do the seventh of December either. And I I can't do most nights because I work. Take off work to.
I'm available for both, that says something about my life.
Sixteenth, pick your poison. We're gonna just go on sixteenth of November.
Thank you all, I'll I'll see if there's other considerations of that and. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no.
No, I just wanna thank Joel, I appreciate that. Fantastic, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing the folks.
Yeah, one thing, um my first term, I organized a build date for Habitat with members of the board and staff. I just wondered if anybody's interested, uh. I don't know if they're this year, they're kinda, they got it all dried in and everything is down in Pontchar, so we might have to wait till maybe next year, but. If anybody's interested, uh. Oh, yeah, right, it's a fun day, so, but I'll get some dates. Most likely won't be till next year.
That's a good, that's a good fun day, well. It helps them.
Sue? Couple things, one, I I just wanna make sure we recognize what happened with the post office, that's pretty darn huge. Thanks to Libby for your leadership. And Philip.
Philip worked on that for a long time.
Yeah, very much, that's a really great outcome.
That was really cool, very surprising.
Yeah, and and I didn't expect it this soon, if you will.
Yeah. Six or seven years.
But I mean, since the last meeting that we talked about, was Grace here in the last meeting, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, but also kudos to them, Grace and Mary Ann, for really, really lighting some fires, so as well. The other thing, also just to comment on, um the airport is having its big fly-in, I guess it's a second annual fly-in on October fifteenth. And I'll get you some info, they're gonna, they're developing a flyer, just to explain to folks what they've got. But uh reported to be some really cool aircraft that I couldn't possibly evaluate as cool or not um at this point, but uh some really cool things coming in and there'll be a barbecue and all that kind of thing. Tides of Columbus are.
Pardon me, is it the HAZ thing?
No, that's that was, that already was, this is a different deal, um it's just a fly-in of uh some interesting air aircraft, they're not, you. They aren't gonna be flying around, but they'll be at the terminal, it's just kind of a cool thing. And Libby, my first one, um the other thing is Mark, Libby and I did have a tour with Jack and Chandra uh last uh last week. And uh and it was really, they, it was really interesting and uh just helpful for me to see the whole lay of the land and. They really appreciated just that we were out there and uh just gave us a good tour and are really interested in being. You know, a very helpful resource in town, and then um Mark and Libby and I, we got to see that gigantic orange. And white helicopter that's flying around, it's actually uh being tested for uh search and rescue in Norway, being built by a. Um UK firm, Leonardo, um that also has. A factory, I guess, or a plant in uh in Italy, and Mark got to fly it and I stood there and worked on the instrumentation. Not really, but we did get to go inside, it was quite cool, they gave us quite a tour, they said that they actually used it for. You something like it for, uh I mean, you can build it out any way you want, but as a rescue, they've actually done open-heart surgery in in the. So anyway, it was quite cool, so.
Was there a jet that landed on Saturday?
There are jets, there are lots more jets now, yeah.
They didn't touch down.
One of them had landing gear down.
Uh they might have touched.
I think it was a touch and go, like, cuz I was leaving the factory and there's like three jets flying over.
Was there a sonic boom with that?
Um not until I got up for the.
We were on the dog walk and I was like. Where is he, like, oh, it's already.
Good work session. Um I really don't have anything particular to talk about right now.
Lisa?
I don't have anything.
I'm just so impressed by Sue's gaining knowledge of the airport, it's really cool. No, thank you, thank you for uh diving in on that and bringing that up to the board.
It's been years since anybody's really paid much attention to that.
Other than staff.
Anyway, thank you, that's it.
Yeah, that's great.
Just showing that uh Main Street looks great, but Gypsy Hill or whatever, the overlay itself. It looks good.
Well, um good. I would just say that uh you should look at your list of liaison assignments and try to get in touch with your committees and like. You're an active beautician, I mean, not beautician, but. Anyway, it's um, you know, the committees want our participation, and if you get invitations to go to events and. You know, as long as you're sure that you and one other trustee will be the only ones there, that's fine, if you feel like there might be more than two of you, just. So that she can put out a public notice of the of the meeting, but um Peter and. Leslie and Lisa and I went out and had a nice tour of the the Meadows property, which was the site of the Billy Strings. Renewal uh concert, and it was just, you know, it's a beautiful site and we got to spend a little time with Jed and it was good. I think that's it from my perspective. Any motions coming out? Time for one more.
Big motion to adjourn.
All right, Row, Christie. Oh, oh. All in favor?
Almost it.